I sent Barry the information, so he should, Barry shouldn't have been on, but he might be having technical difficulty.
Okay, so just let me know if you know he comes on and Damon too as well, okay?
Yeah, the first public hearing is until 7:15, so they've got time. We'll just go over a few items.
Okay.
Still don't know why there isn't any video.
So you officially opened the meeting, Bill?
Yes.
Okay. All right, do you want to go over Fred Lapham, the Sylvan Springs there?
Yeah, just hold on one second, because I'm, uh...
Okay, you take, you take it from there. I'll just listen.
Slight tech, technical difficulty here.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, the Fred Lapham, um, Fred has a, uh, do we have that drawing yet? So I don't think it was ever sent to me. Hold on one second, let me see if I can pull up Jeff's version of that.
Um, actually Jeff Walsh sent something to you about reviewing the things? Okay.
Copy. Stop.
I'm sending it to somebody else. All right. Okay. Is everyone familiar with the application? I'm sure if you haven't used Teams before, there's the ability to raise your hand when you ask a question. Please do not speak out once we get to the public hearing. Will we, will, I don't want to start, um, Fred's change until after the public hearings, Gil. I want to make sure you have enough time to address that.
Okay.
But, um...
Okay, there's one other thing that we could do would be the, um, submittal for special permit application for 15 Hartford Avenue West. They want to put a hair salon in the basement.
Okay.
All we would have to do, all we would have to do is, um, do a, um, a public hearing, uh, uh, we wouldn't be able to do it until September 14th in order for me to get ads in the paper and everything. So it's just a submittal, um, by Maxine and Rachel Valanca. So all we want to do-
What was that address again, please?
Uh, 15 Hartford Avenue West.
Okay. And that's falling under the, uh, the, uh, gen- uh-
Special permit.
Okay. That's in the general residential?
Yes.
Yeah.
So it's just a special permit application that you need.
Yeah, you need a motion?
Okay.
I'll make a motion to set up, Jim.
Oh, Jim, okay, yeah.
Set up a public hearing for 15 Hartford Avenue West hair salon in the basement.
For special-
Special permit, September 14th. Do you have a time in mind, Gil?
Uh, 7:15, I would say.
7:15 is good.
Second.
Yep.
Although-
John's second.
Okay, yep, okay.
It's unanimous, but...
Okay, so Barry and Damon are not on yet, right?
I haven't heard from either one, so I would say no.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we're all set on that one then, okay? So I'll handle that, of course, okay?
All right, just before the meeting starts, um, I want to go over, uh, the, which I typically do at every meeting. When, it's a little more difficult, obviously, in the virtual meetings. I don't expect anybody to be talking unless they're asking a question directly to the board. There will be no crosstalk. If someone else is talking and you interrupt, I will mute that person. You get one speaker at a time. It's difficult enough through a virtual meeting. Understand this is a site plan review. Is there anybody need, needs an explanation to what a site plan review is? Okay.
It's a site plan special permit, Bill.
No, it shouldn't have been a special permit. Should be just a site plan review. That's what I asked you about.
No, that was for 5 Harrington Street, you asked me.
Yeah, yeah, that's one, that's the first one, right?
No.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. 25 Cape Road's the first one. Yeah, it is a site plan-
It's 21-25 Cape Road.
Okay, that is a site plan special permit, okay.
Okay, thank you. I thought I was going crazy.
I'm not wearing my glasses, so...
Okay.
All right, um, so yes, um, if anybody's recording the meeting, they have to identify it to the board at this time. Once again, there's a little raise your hand button. I will try to give everybody an opportunity to speak. Does everybody see that raise your hand button? It's in that middle panel. It should be up on your screen. Anyone who's not utilizing the application?
Um, is there, sorry, is there a raise hand option on mobile? Because it doesn't look like it's in the same spot on mobile.
Well, if anybody just says their name, because that's the only way, obviously, I'm going to be able to identify who's talking. I don't care about that raise your hand button. Just say your name. Try not to interrupt anyone else. I will call upon you. And I will give every, believe me, I will give everybody an opportunity to speak. I always do.
So name and address, Bill.
Name and address, excuse me.
Correct, yep.
Hello, my name is Bruce Howe. I'm at 5 Joseph Road. I'm sorry to interrupt, but there is no outbound video from you folks.
All right, okay.
I get the audio, the audio is perfect, Bill. There you go. There you go. We got outbound video.
Sorry about that.
No, there we go. That's beautiful. I'm going to take my hand down.
Yeah, usually, um, I can see you, uh, Sherry.
Uh, we just lost the video and the audio.
You're kidding?
I got the audio back, but no video.
I see video.
You see video?
Yeah.
I see videos too.
Yeah, I have no inbound video.
Huh, because it's, it's on.
Yeah, and I, and my camera, there you go.
All right.
Came back again.
Oh, the world of technology.
There you go.
All right, um... Sherry, did you have a question? I saw your hand up there for a second. Oh, you're muted. Hold on, let me unmute you. Right on now.
Okay. I am not on a mobile device. I'm on my computer, and there is nothing about a hand.
Don't worry about it, just stay-
Okay, I'll just do this.
Either that or one at your time, just say your name and your address, so Gil can, uh, write it down.
Okay.
Um, but I-
This is after you open the public hearing.
Yeah, everybody be, uh, yeah, after I open the public hearing. Everybody be patient. We use Robert's rules. Um, all questions directed to the board, not other people. If the board can't answer your question, we will get an answer for you. I don't allow crosstalk in my, uh, public hearings. I will mute people who do that. Um, is John not on board?
I am, Bill. I just unmuted and put my camera on.
Um, are you handling the, uh, 21-25, uh-
I am.
Oh, you're not, you're not.
I am doing 21-25 Cape Road.
Who's, uh, who's handling 21? Oh, you are?
I am, yes, I am.
Okay, all right. All right, we got about two minutes to start the meeting. Uh, then I'll open the public hearing. We'll give the applicant an opportunity to speak first. Then the board will ask its questions. Once the board is completed asking its questions, the, uh, I will allow the community to ask any questions. Uh, John, do you have documents to put up? Do you know how to put them up on?
Um, I don't know how to put them up, but they're all on the town website. I sent them-
All right, I can, I think I can just pull them up, so...
Okay. Hey, Bill, how many numbers do you have?
We have five.
Oh, you do? They're all, okay.
We got three, oh, no, we only got three tonight.
No, you got four right here.
Oh, is that Damon?
Who's that?
Sounds like Damon.
Damon, okay, good.
Oh, okay, good.
We got four. I mean, we had a quorum anyways.
Okay, great, okay.
Sorry, I'm late.
That's all right. Yes, Sherry. Oh, she's muted again. She keeps getting muted. You keep getting muted. I don't know.
I, I keep muting myself. Um, sorry about that. Can you just tell us who is on the planning board, please?
Sure, it's on the town website, but it's myself, Bill Ambrosino. I'm the chairman. We have James Quirk. John Van Der Sees.
It's like they're at the steakhouse downstairs, right?
Damon Tinio. And Barry Idarola.
Planting board. No, he just must be bitching about, probably going to bitch about something.
All right, once again, Sherry, at any time, you can find that information directly on the, uh, the planning board website. Okay, it's 7:15. We're going to open the public hearing for, uh, 21-25 Cape Road site plan special permit. Uh, John, take it away.
Good evening, John. I'm here representing Gold Medal, Gold Medalist LLC. Um, coming in front of the board today, Abe Jerez currently runs a gas station on one side of Rosenfeld Drive, and on the other side, he currently runs a car wash and auto repair business. He would like to, um, extend that business by, uh, putting up another building that he can do auto repair in directly behind the current auto repair business. Um, it's going in an existing, in an existing area that is almost all pavement. There's a strip of 10 feet of gravel back there. There's also a, um, existing, existing, um, existing, um, chamber for the under drains to drain in. We're proposing moving that over and then, uh, putting the new building in, in the area directly behind that. Um, we did get a, a letter from Graves Engineering. We didn't get it till, uh, 5 o'clock, 5:10 tonight. I did, uh, I'd like to address a few things. Um, there was some mistakes. You know, he's saying there were mistakes on some of the parking areas on Sheet 2, but Abe informed me that he restripped the parking lot the day before Jeff went out to look at it. So some of the parking striping has changed, which I will update on the existing conditions. Um, I did not show that 10-foot strip of gravel right behind that, the building, because that's going to get paved. Um, and then there was one corner that I showed rounding that was supposed to be shown, uh, square on the existing conditions. That's, really doesn't have much to do with the, um, proposal of the building itself. Um, the only thing really that, um, is, uh, in respect to the site plan itself, would be a loading area, which I will, I can show a loading area. I'll just show the hatched area near the, near, right in between the two buildings. An onsite snow storage, which was shown on the original site plan in the back, next to the detention basin where those parking lots are. Um, we are going to have to, um, expand the septic system with two trenches. And there was also a, a letter from the, uh, town water department saying we can't hook into that. Abe currently has a, uh, well on site for the car wash that produces 60 gallons per minute, so he'll be tying that building into the well that's currently on site. Um, other than that, there wasn't very much on Jeff's letter. Like I said, the, some of the parking areas, he said there was nine painted, but there was 11 shown on the plan. And a lot of that was because Abe changed the, the striping in a few places on this, on the site plan. Um, the other comment was on the, um, on the, uh, the wetlands plant, I mean, on the, um, on the silt fence plan, I had to extend the silt fence 10 feet farther south in one area. I will do that. Like I said, I didn't get the plan, I didn't get the letter until, uh, 10 past 5 today. So I, I was able to, uh, look at, look over everything, make sure we could address everything. Uh, it's very minor. All the hydrology and the stormwater is the same. Um, the impervious area that the building's going on is going to be replaced with an impervious area. None of the drainage changes. Uh, one drain line has to be moved over, so it doesn't go under the building. I show that on the, on the proposed site plan. Catch basin stain in the corner where it is. We just have to move over the line. We'll be moving the tank for the, um, floor drains from between the two buildings to out in front of the two buildings and connect the two buildings into the, the floor drain chamber. And like I said, there's some changes to the septic system, but that'll have to go through Board of Health to get approved. Uh, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Hey, this is Damon. Just, John, I guess I missed it. What, what, what property is this?
So this is the property across the street from Abe's gas station, uh, 21 Cape Road. And it's, it's a, well, it's across the street. It's across Rosenfeld Drive, which goes down the hill to the commercial land in the back. Right across-
Behind the car wash?
Yeah, no, so it's going to be behind his, his auto repair business. So he has the car wash to the left. His auto repair shop is to the right. It'll be directly behind that.
Okay, I got it, okay. All right, thank you.
I don't even believe you'll be able to see it from the street. It'll be blocked by the other building.
Yeah, no, understood. I just was, I just was not in the beginning. I didn't hear what the address was, so I-
Yeah.
Is there any, any way that anybody can show us a copy of the plan?
I can, uh, flip my, uh, if you can get me up on the screen, I can put it on camera.
Yeah, actually, I've, uh, I've got it here. Hold on one second. That's the plan. Can you see that?
Yes, okay, thank you.
Just so everybody's aware, this, this is Route 140. This is the current car wash and auto repair, right?
Hey, Bill, yeah, can you go to the, uh, go to the grading utility plan, which I believe is Sheet 4? That's the existing condition plan. That, that doesn't show the addition.
All right, hold on. Oh. Hold on one second. I didn't save that one off. It's going to take me a second to save that file off. You said Sheet 4?
I believe so. It should say grading and utility plan.
Yep, that's it. All right, hold on. Is this the grading and utility plan?
I guess I would just like to see the, the building on the plan.
Yeah, that shows the building and the, there you go. So that's the existing building. The new building is directly behind it. If you go straight back, it says proposed auto body shop, 4,050 square feet. Um, you can see the tank that I was speaking about, that will be where the new building's going. We're moving that out front. Um, we're, we're putting two new trenches on the septic system, one on, um, uh, eastly side and one on the westerly side of the, of the system. And we're moving the line that goes from the, uh, catch basin in the northerly or the north, uh, westly corner of the parking lot. We're going to move that line, add a manhole, and tie into the existing drainage. Jeff Walsh was all set with the drainage. Um, really, the biggest complaint was with the existing conditions, because most of the spaces were different and shown on the existing conditions.
Is he all set with that? Have you followed that with Jeff?
I have not, because like I said, I didn't get the, I did not get the letter until 5, 10 past 5 tonight, so I- Um, you know, I'll have to change the spaces. I'll have to go out and re, and redo the spaces where they're, where they're striped now. So I'll just have to change that on the plan.
Now, um, are you, are they going to, uh, adhere to the current design guide we set forth in the other buildings?
Yes, they are. He's, and he just told me, he's here with me, just told me that he does have a elevation plan done. Um, you know, like I said, I didn't get the letter in time. He didn't bring it with him, but it's the same style as his front building, the same siding as the front building.
All right, if he could forward that to the board when he has an opportunity, the one condition we'll set for the, uh, site plan order will be that, uh, the planning board has an opportunity to look over and approve that rendering.
Yeah, and I will get, I'll get the current existing conditions over to Jeff and, uh, anything else on his list here about the plans. And I'll get him stamped copies. I, I don't get the copies stamped until once we're done all the revisions.
What about the lighting? Uh, you're-
Yeah, there's one light. You'll see it right, you can see it right on this. He's talking about the one light, right where it says proposed auto body. There's a light right there. We'll probably just remove that and put a light on the building.
Okay.
We'll remove the pole light and put a light, so it just shines down on the side of the building.
Um, now, this is auto body repair shop, uh, you know, having been involved in the business for a considerable amount of time, there tends to be outside, outside storage with the auto body, with the collision repair facility. Have we made any appropriation for that?
Um, I do have, I did add, um, four or five additional spaces right, um, in front of the auto body shop. Um, to the left of where the dumpster pad is shown with the fencing around it, I added four spots right there for storage. Additional storage for car vehicles.
All right, well, the one thing, um, the one condition where we can talk about is he's going to have to minimize the amount of, uh, you know, usually at a collision repair shop, you have damaged vehicles sitting outside.
Yeah.
We're going to have to minimize the number of vehicles to those spot locations. Unless he was to put in a pen or something like that.
Right, so, so, um, so if the board's desire is, you know, Abe owns all the land out there, he can fence an area, uh, for storage of any vehicles that are damaged.
That's, that'd be my suggestion. I, I also know there tends to be a, you know, uh, uh, a scrap, you know, scrap parts and stuff like that.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, that all needs to be controlled. I mean, I, we don't just want to see a yard full of junk pods lying around. That needs to be controlled. I mean, most shops do that today. They run a very controlled environment. I, our expectation would be the same. Um, if, you know, you go to some of the repair facilities in the area today, the yards are pretty clean and, and, you know, our expectation would be the same.
Okay, yep, so I can submit something into that respect of a fenced-in area to store those cars and pots.
Yeah, if you just haven't probably put something on the plan that shows a fenced-in area, I think that would be fine, right, Bill?
Yeah.
Yep.
And you're probably going to need an area for metal dumpsters and, and, uh, and debris also, because there's a lot, a lot of scrap metal.
Yeah, so we know we'll do that all in that fenced-in area.
Sounds good. Uh, when, when can we expect a, a model of that?
Uh, so, um, probably sometime after next weekend, Monday? Sunday, Saturday, Sunday?
All right, at this point in time, um, is there any other questions from the board, or? Today, we get approval for Dishon Building, John from ZB.
Yeah?
Dishon Buildings. He's got multiple buildings on one lot. Uh, John, one question I do have.
Yeah.
I'm sure we addressed in the original site plan was multiple buildings on one lot.
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe there's a problem amended with that, and I did check for the distance with the fire chief, the distance between the buildings, and he was okay with the distance between them.
Yeah, but there's a percentage of coverage.
Uh, I believe I have that on the cover that we're good for that.
You're good for that?
On the cover sheet, I have, or one of the sheets I have, I think I have a zoning chart. I thought I might have-
I'm sure Jeff would have brought it up. I read Jeff's notes.
Yeah, I definitely have that on the zoning table, on the cover sheet of how much open space to building coverage and stuff.
Are you open for public questions?
Uh, I just, I'm waiting for an answer on that one, uh, question. Once, once we, uh, get an answer to that, I will open the floor to, uh, the community.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Bill?
Yes.
Uh, building coverage max is 30%. We're at 11.4%,
Okay, all right. Yeah, like I said, I'm sure Jeff Walsh would have brought it up if it was any greater than that, so... All right, at this time, I'm going to open the, uh, questions to, uh, I'm going to bring down the, um, the drawing so I can, um, see who's asking questions.
I don't know how this works, but I have a question.
Hold on. All right, who has a question? I'm sorry?
I do.
All right, this is the way we're going to handle the meeting. When you have a question, you need to say- you need to say your name and your address.
My name, Karen Lovejoy, 14 Blackstone Street.
And what is your question?
My question is, can we hold this off till we find out how he plans to keep the cars, the used car parts and cars in one place? Not near the road so that doesn't look like a mess.
We can continue until the 22nd. With the resolution on the 22nd, certainly. I do have dates that I need to adhere to, so we'll have to make sure that on the 22nd, you have a resolution.
It would be the 24th, Bill, not the 22nd.
24th. John, can you have this wrapped up by the 24th?
I absolutely can, but the one thing we would, we would ask is that the board take a vote on the special permit? And that allows us to spend some more money on the building plan and stuff. And once we know we have the special permit, then all the other stuff.
Yeah, that's fine, because then we can, then, then we can deal with the the other stuff on a continuation of the site plan review.
Correct, absolutely.
I have a question. Bruce Howe, 5 Joseph Road.
Yes.
I'm a little, I'm a little bit confused listening to the dialogue that's been going on between the board and and John Nennart. You know, from my perspective, it sounds like as long as he does what you guys want, you're gonna grant him the permit. And it just strikes me as that's kind of the cart before the horse, because would appear to me that the real debate is, are you even gonna consider putting an auto body shop in there? That's question number one. Question number two, what is the relationship between Kevin Mean's engineering facility and the owner of the property? And question number three, the building should certainly be an appearance, should certainly be an improvement in, in appearance other than the existing garage. The existing garage is nothing other than a square box and doesn't do any justice aesthetically to the area at all.
I'll take one question at a time. The relationship between John Nennart and whoever the applicant is who hired him is no concern of the board. Number one. I mean, it just isn't. I mean, I have legal ramifications in this board as required by how we handle these meetings. His relationship with Kevin Mean or Abe or, or the applicant?
I have no problem answering that. I, I've been friends with Abe for 12 years and handled his engineering while I was at Geren-Hellman. And he asked me to do the site plan for him.
Okay, so it's not, because in the, in the notice, it says that you're a part of the Mean Engineering Group.
So yes, that's where I work.
So the implication is that the owner of the property hired Mean Engineering Group. If, if that's the correct name to do, to do the work. And as we all know, you know, there's certainly plenty of land that is around that is, you know, looking to be developed. So I'm, I'm just, I'm a little concerned about the relation, the relationship.
Yeah, so their relationship between Kevin and Abe, other than they know each other, the relationship is between myself and Abe is that I did all his engineering work for 10 or 12 years at Geren-Hellman.
Excuse me, I'm gonna hold this meeting up for a second. What transpires outside of, of, you know, the relationship between an engineer and the applicant has no bearing on this board?
Okay, that's fine. I'll accept that. So I'll go back to my first question then, which is, based on the discussion, it seems that you know, there's an implication that this is already okay as long as the, as long as the applicant just draws up the plans and gives you guys what you want. And as I mentioned before, that just seems like it's the cart before the horse. And the real issue being, are you gonna allow an auto body shop in there or not? As it's currently a disallowed use of the, of the zoning. And that appears to be a question that does go to the board and is germane to the meeting.
And it, right, that, that's the biggest, you know, aberrant to this meeting is whether Mendon decides to allow an auto body repair shop within the community.
Right, right.
Hold on one second. I'm gonna explain zoning, how zoning works to you. Any town can write a bylaw prohibiting something. As we found out with adult entertainment, that that bylaw is only as good as it'll stand up in court. Now, when you look at that area of Mendon, number one, it's a highway business district. Number two, there are already other auto repair facilities in the area across the street, down the streets. There are other facilities already there. Number, you know, number three, the board has to find something that is detrimental to the community before acting unreasonable. We don't just get to say no. Just because it isn't permitted does not make it not permissible. Mendon has to determine whether this facility being there is gonna be adversely detrimental to the community.
So, okay.
That's why we hope, don't realize that prior to me getting on the board in 2010, we had a nine-page zoning bylaw. Everything was prohibited. Everything that was built in this town was built based on special permit.
Well, the auto body shop is a listed special permit. Across the street is an auto repair shop, which is the same as what is in front. Those, those are, those are currently permitted businesses. And so then, or special, specially permitted businesses then, what are the criteria that allow those to go forward? What specific criteria allow, what specific criteria allow a specially permitted business to go forward? That's my question.
Yeah, what we generally look is to, the impact that business would have on the community. Whether it's detrimental because of particular reasons, be traffic, pollution, any, any array of subjects that could make it look detrimental to the community. That would get the board to act and say to deny a special permit.
Okay, how about the painting? Auto body shops are part of the, a major part of their business is painting. And painting is a highly regulated and controlled by both the state and federal EPA.
That's correct. I mean, that doesn't fall under this board. He still has to hear, adhere to all those state and federal regulations.
Yep, but it, as, yeah, but Bill, as, as you previously mentioned, it's something that could be detrimental to the community. And, and what about painting? That could be detrimental to the community.
It could be, but today, downdraft boosts, the environmental controls placed on body shops. You're speaking to someone who comes from that business. I actually own, own a business, not auto body repair business. I own a business that works for insurance carriers handling claims that frequent repair facilities.
No, I'm very familiar with painting. You know, I was involved with painting, you know, throughout my professional career. I'm very familiar.
You're aware of downdraft boosts and how those are managed and, and the materials are collected? Most of them, you know, wet systems today, the dust doesn't even get out of the building.
Well, I guess that depends on the quality of the system that somebody's willing to install and how well that's regulated and checked.
Well, the, number one is required now.
But it's required, you know, I mean, it's required. Again, there's all types of boosts that people can get. Some are much better than others. And it also depends a lot on how they're maintained and how, you know, how diligent the owner is.
They're risking being shut down.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Absolut, absolutely, absolutely they are.
The coke controls are in place in Massachusetts. Once again, I, you know, I'm looking at what would be reasonable that the planning board could, could find a reason not to permit it? Okay, is it that detrimental to the public? Can someone say something?
Table this till we have more information?
Huh?
Can you table this until we get more information?
What information would you like? The board may be able to answer that question for you.
The painting, the landscape, the biohazards, whatever comes with having an auto body shop. Maybe we just need more information before we pass this.
John, do you have, do you have an issue with continuing the special permit till the 24th? Yeah, I wanna give the community an opportunity to do their, their due diligence and but I, I know what the outcome will be. I mean, I can pretty much give them the mass regulation.
No, I just wanna emphasize, this is on an existence site that is currently auto repaired and the building is going directly behind another building on a commercial site in town. I don't have a problem continuing to the next meeting.
It's basically our industrial area. It was voted on in town meeting.
If I didn't work for Kevin Mean, I don't think this would even be an issue, but maybe it is because I work for Kevin Mean now.
Excuse me, guys. This is Damon. So a special permit is not gonna approve the site plan?
That's correct.
Okay, so if we get the special permit approved and then they come back in for a site plan, to continue for the, for the site plan, for the landscaping, the rendering and everything else, what is, that's gonna answer all the questions that the people.
I mean, and keep in mind that, that approval with planning doesn't approve the building, of the building. They'll have to go through before the Board of Health, Conservation, every other item that they normally would have to process. Board of Health is gonna be the governing body on the, on the health of the, you know, how the configuration is within inside that building.
I'd be more concerned about the, the body shops that have been around for years that are, I mean, not so much grandfathered in, but, you know, have older style, you know, this is gonna be a brand new state of the art body shop, I'm assuming. If he's gonna, if he's gonna deal with all the requirements that the, the state guidelines that are gonna be thrown at him.
I think, I think what we're, I think Damon, what they're concerned in is adding another one. Which, you know, I understand the concern, but
No, I do too.
Once again, we have to look at it as an application that, you know, that you know, there has to be a clear and objective detriment to the community. I mean, it's, you know, and as far as from the notes from the, from, for the planning's responsibility, the notes from our civil engineer that that handles the town's consulting work. Heat intake issue with drainage and other, and there's also, you know, collection system that he has to be responsible for. He didn't have issues with those items. So, you know, I think that, you know, Damon makes a good point in the fact that all these collection systems are gonna be brand new as opposed to facilities we'd have operating that, you know, don't have in-ground storage going on currently. They're barrel storing and stuff like that and and oh, I, I mean, we could certainly do that. I, I don't think it's gonna change anything on the special permit. I think the highway business district was designed for these type of businesses. I think that's why we, and, and keep in mind, our zoning laws are evolving. I actually have CMRPC now working on our master plan because for other, for various reasons, we were just never able to complete ourselves. So I now have CMRPC working on it. And they're gonna rewrite all our bylaws and bring them up to date with the rest of the state.
I mean, I just feel that we're just, this is something that if we get one part done and then we can address all the issues. These people are looking for landscaping. They're looking for situations about, you know, what, what the downdraft system is gonna be. You know, for the next meeting, if we can have the answers to these questions for the townspeople, understandable, but we should probably move on with the special permit as of tonight, I think.
Absolutely not, absolutely not, since.
Yeah, I, I disagree with that, you know, again. Bill, I'm.
Excuse me, excuse me, who's speaking?
Bruce Howe. 5 Joseph Road.
I know you were speaking, Bruce. I was wondering, you still had the floor. I was wondering who else was speaking out?
I spoke, John, Damon.
No, there was somebody else who spoke out.
Karen Lovejoy, 14 Blackstone Street.
Okay, Karen, did you have a question or?
You just said that you were going to rewrite the bylaws. I think we should forget.
Yeah, that has nothing to do with this particular meeting, so I don't wanna get off on that.
Why won't it?
What are you talking about? We're working, doing.
If you're going to rewrite the bylaws, why are you doing this now?
Well, we have to, we have, we have, Karen, let me speak. I'm the chair. We have a number of days requirement that we have to manage applications by. And you can't just deny them all. Okay, it's probably gonna take another year to complete the master plan and rewrite the, the Mendon bylaws.
Yes.
So we can't, we, we can't hold all applications for you. Are there any other questions and then I'll take a motion?
Bill, I'd still like to question, or I do have a question that's Bruce Howe, 5 Joseph Road. My question is, where are, where is the written definition of what's allowed or not allowed in special permitting? The instructions for the board, where is that?
What do you mean, as far as state regulations or?
No.
Or on our, on our current zoning bylaw?
You, you commented that you have to determine, is it a benefit or a detriment to the town? So you must have some criteria, written criteria that you follow in making a determination if a special permit goes ahead or not. My question is, where is that information so that I can read it?
If you, if you go on CPTC, they have a website that has courses that will instruct you on how to be a planner or a planning board member within a community. And in, in that information, it'll tell you how you ought to manage, whether it's a site plan review, whether it's a special permit, whether it's a subdivision. And one of the criteria is, a town has, and all I can say this to you, a good lesson from Mendon should have been the bylaw that was written that we prohibited everything for an adult entertainment. And you saw what happened with that. It cost, I, I think the end result was it cost Mendon several hundreds of thousands of dollars on a court case because we didn't act responsible. The town still is required to act responsibly. You can't just say no. You can't just say no. There, there's nowhere in zoning, the person owns that property. He has a right to do that property as much as you do with yours. Um.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree with that, um, but I don't think that.
If you think, if you think there's a justification that it's unreasonable to add this facility, you know, now's your time to speak.
That's what I'm doing. And again, I'm, I'm asking, I'm asking you, where are the town's written instructions that give, that give you direction, you, the planning board as a group, direction on allowing a special permit? It's not what the Central Mass Regional Planning Council says that you do and take a course. It's what the town, it's what the town instructs you to do, and I want to know, I want to know where that information is, that it's not an arbitrary decision made by the board. There should be a simple procedure that says, yep, it's A, B, or C.
There is no distinction.
Okay, so then, again.
Menon doesn't have that document.
Okay, thank you. They don't have that document, so then I, you know, I, I, I'm, I still question. All that we're discussing here is we've got a whole plan that's all drawn up. My whole point is, it just appears to me that we've got the cart way before the horse.
Well, like I said, two thirds of Menon, it was built on special permit. Um, we've had, we've had, you know, these come before us. There is when I tell you to go to see CMRPC or CTPC, that's actually UMass's instructional group for zoning. Okay?
Excuse me, Bill, this is John, and there are, there are written guidelines, section one point oh six. Um, subsection B, one through seven, that says exactly what you have to do that's filled to, to um, apply for a special permit.
Yeah, what you have to do.
Lot size, frontage heights, coverage, convenience and safety, if they hit any movement within the site relation to adjacent streets, adequately arrangement of number of parking spots, loading space in relation to both uses of the premises, provisions for all street loading. There are specific things, arrangement and appearance of proposed building structures. Advisories of method of waste disposal, surface and subsurface drainage and lighting, protection of adjoining premises of general neighborhood, any detrimental use of the lot or tract, a public hearing must take place. We have addressed those issues. Um, I, nobody that is speaking is saying why they're against the project. What is, what is it with the project that they are against? Are they just against development in the town of Menon? Are they against an auto body shop in the town of Menon? Are they against a, a building right behind another building? I haven't heard anything that specifically spells out what they're against. I'm, I'm a little confused on how to address, I, I, I don't, I'm confused on how to address um, the people that are speaking, cause they're not telling me what they're against. Are they just against development in general in Menon?
No, not against development. I'm sorry, this is Bruce Howe at five Joseph Road. Not against development. Yeah, as I have stated repeatedly, it just strikes me that the, you got the cart way before the horse.
No, this is exactly.
I'll end it at that. We don't have to debate it. I'm quite sure it's gonna go through. I have no doubt that it'll go through. So, you know, I'll withdraw, somebody else, somebody else.
No, 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 I'd like to address that a little bit. It, it's not putting the copy for the horse. We did, we did plans. We filled out an application, we submitted to the board, we got a butters list. We applied for a special permit, we paid the application fees, we, we followed their regulations on how to apply and we applied. If, and we've, we advertised for a, a hearing. It's been a month. It's reviewed by the uh, by the um, town's engineer. We, we are following the procedure. That's what we do. It's not putting, this is, you get to the meeting and you go to the meeting to try to get it approved. I don't see how we're putting the cart before the horse.
And when you, and Bruce, when you talk about, you know, where do we get our information? Okay, the, if you, if you were to go on uh, the Massachusetts website regarding zoning, it, there's like five things it, it tells the town that it needs to be responsible for on the site plan, uh, under special permit. And one of those things is, you know, some of the things John just talked about, how it affects the community around it, what's the, you know, what's the um, it needs to adhere to what the community is around it and what negative impact and but is it against the well-being of the community? And it also tells you that you can't be unreasonable in your determinations.
I, I wholly, I, Bill, I wholly agree with that. I think for the sake of every, for the sake of everybody there, let's just move on. You know, I'm, I'm not, I'm not gonna it's not worth debating the issue anymore from my perspective. Let's, let's just move on. There may be other people that, that would like to comment or, or have a question, and I've, I've certainly absorbed uh, more than enough time.
Do I have any other more questions from the community?
Kathy Schofield, one thirty-five Blackstone Street.
Yes, Kathy.
Hi, Bill. Um, I would like to thank the previous speaker for pointing out some things and um, I mean, getting some questions straightened out so we can kind of get our heads wrapped around what's coming down the pike. Um, one of the issues that I had when this car wash existing um, buildings had gone in was that we are losing or sacrificing the look of our community by putting up buildings with blue roofs. Um, you know, um, there's a, a huge gap in what colonial really is when you propose that you're gonna build something that looks colonial. Um, and, and I think, you know, it's great that we have a highway business di- district, but I do believe that we have to make sure that we impart a certain standard of appropriateness, attractiveness, uh, landscaping, things like that, and I would like to see those go through. I also believe that if Mr. Nenot agreed that, you know, uh, we, it, all the paperwork is not in and it's not completed, that a decision should, should be held off for, what, what is it, uh, ten, twelve days? Until it can be presented as a whole. I don't know that it is a good practice to approve things ahead of time without having complete paperwork um, presented to the board, and that would be my input.
I think, I think Kathy, what he's trying to, you know, we have two different processes running. We have the special permit process and the site plan review. Um, unfortunately, uh, we allow for, for uh, as most towns do for expedited permitting, that we allow those to be done at the same time, uh, concurrently. Um, does not mean they need to be approved at the same time. You can approve a use in a special permit, which is basically what the special permit does. It, it approves a use. Um, the site plan is gonna approve the site, the design, the criteria, the, you know, the layout. Um, so they're, they're actually two separate processes. Uh, you know, like the next public hearing coming up is only a site plan review. It's, it's um, you know, it's not a special permit application. It's only a site plan review, so they're, they're actually two separate processes and, you know, it wouldn't be uncommon for a board to approve a, a special permit separate from the, the site plan review. We could hold the site plan review up, I mean, is with as much authority as we do, uh, special permit, you know, until we're satisfied.
Can you withdraw the special permit if what is being presented is not complete? Or doesn't, you know?
He can't build it, he can't build it till the site plan review is, is approved. So, I mean, a special permit is just governing use. Um, and, you know, the, the, the site plan review is what manages the entire site, appearances, access, um, traffic, parking. I mean, that's all done through site plan review.
Yep, okay. And is, um, just a second question, is there a fence that exists between um, this property and the church? Um, cause I know there, there's definitely schools that are, um.
Is there a house in between or?
Is there a fence?
No, I mean, I don't think there is at this time. Is there a house in between?
No house, there could be a fence, I don't know. John, can you answer that?
Um, I don't know if there's a fence, but there's a fairly large buffer between the um, edge of the parking lot. There's a stone wall with tree, you know, a tree area that you really can't even.
Well, there, there needs to be, it needs to be a buffer if, um, between residential and um, which a school's gonna be falling a residential category.
Sure.
Yeah, so this is an approved site plan. We're just going back to the amendment of putting, putting the building in the parking lot that's there now.
Oh yeah, that's correct, yeah. Yeah, that's the other issue, was the site plan, um, well, you're asking for an amended site plan.
Correct, but we're not, we're not going any closer to the, the, any closer to the church or anything, the, the edge of the parking lot's not changing, none of that.
Okay.
So we're not, and, and we're not expanding the site other than putting a building on the existing pavement.
To be honest with you, I mean, as a, as a planning member, I'm more concerned with what you're gonna do with the excess automobiles, what you're gonna do with the excess materials. Those are more, more my concern than, than, you know, because it is a pretty good buffer between the current school and I, I recall that when I went through the site plan before. But I think we really need to designate what you're gonna do with those additional materials. Uh, I'd like to see a slatted fence around that so you can't see. Um, it, um, you know, we shouldn't be able to see those uh, you know, those additional, and also, also controls for disposing of the materials.
Absolutely, so we'll come back with amendments to the site plan um, at the next meeting for all that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, that, 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 that is gonna be addressed at the next meeting. All the site plan will be addressed at the next meeting. But let's get back to where we were. Do we wanna make, do we wanna do the special?
Well, I would need a motion on the floor, and the motion would need to, for the site plan, we need to, do anyone have any questions? Additional questions first of all? I want to make sure the community has an opportunity to speak.
Yes, uh, Bill, Mr. Ambrosino, uh, this is Tom Bellin from thirty-four Crest Street Drive. We about the property. Um, concerned about um, light coming from the parking lot over there in that area in Harrington Street.
Yeah, they have minimal lighting there now. Um, I think, I, we're not gonna require any like overhead lighting like we would at a, at a dealership or something like that. I mean, I think it's all ground. John, if I, it's all ground, um.
Um, there's, well, there's some, there's some pole lighting, but it's low pole lighting and we're not adding any lighting, any additional lighting, lighting.
Is that lighting?
In fact, it's high pole that's right behind the building. We can get rid of that.
Oh, uh, so you're not adding any additional from the original site?
No, no.
I, I just uh, concerned the light that gets there now isn't bad, but it still shines in our, in our, in our backyards. Is it, just wonder if it could be aimed towards the parking lot and not our houses?
Yeah, so all the, all the lighting is, is, is dark sky lighting, it's all aimed down, but the problem is when you're down low and you're looking up at the light, you can see the light, even though the light doesn't leave the, you know, sight at a high rate, but you can see the light. Um, the only thing we can do is try to do custom shields. Uh, we did that up at um, forty-five, forty-nine Oxbridge Road. If, if we know the direction you're looking from, sometimes you can put an additional shield around it so that you can't see the light, so if I know where you're located and there's a specific light that you're talking about, we might be able to shield it.
John, will you follow up with that?
Sure.
Mr. Bellin, um.
Yes, um, yeah, do you want to take down my number if you want to give me a call?
I'm, I'm, I just jumped on here. I thought you were talking about the Harrington Street area.
Oh, no, 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 Harrington.
So, my, my apologies, my uh, my neighbor Don Moore just corrected me.
Sorry about that, no, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's next.
All right, and, and we're coming up with, Bill, any questions on uh, on the uh, anybody else, any town residents? It's not. We want to make a motion for the special, approve the special permit, but um, to twenty, twenty-nine?
Twenty-one and twenty-five.
Twenty-one to twenty-five.
What, twenty-one to twenty-five Cape Road?
Yep.
Second.
All those in favor?
Okay, who, okay, who was that? John seconded it?
Uh, Jim seconded it.
Damon, Damon motion, Jim seconded.
Yep. Okay, to uh, approve this special permit only, right?
Special permit only.
Okay.
Then, John, you'll have enough time to get in.
You're gonna have a motion to continue the site plan to August twenty-fourth.
I make a motion to continue the site plan for twenty-one, twenty-five Cape Road till August twenty-fourth. What time, Gail?
Seven thirty, because you have uh, forty-nine Milford Street at seven fifteen, so at seven thirty.
Second.
Um, yeah. Make that uh.
Give us enough time, Bill?
Uh, what, what address is that on Milford Street?
Uh, forty-nine Milford.
That was the adult entertainment.
Correct.
You better make that seven forty-five.
Okay, seven forty-five, okay. Okay, and Jim seconded it, right?
Yes.
Bill, did they take a vote on the special permit?
Yes.
Oh, they did? Okay, I didn't hear it.
It'd be a roll call. It has to be, you gotta make sure it's legal. It has to be a roll call vote.
Hey, Bill?
Who's saying you have to have a roll call?
Um, that's my, that's our, that's my lawyer.
Okay, that's John Nenot, right?
Yes, this is John.
Uh, there's been a requested roll call. Bill Ambrosino said affirmative.
Damon, Damon.
Okay, so John, yes. Okay, Bill, yes.
James Quirk, yes.
Okay. Did Damon say yes or?
Damon said yes.
Okay, roll call was done.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, thank you, Bill, and uh, so we're, we're gonna be continued to the twenty-fourth, correct?
Yeah, and please, um, if, if, if there's anything else that Jeff needs to approve, Jeff Walsh, uh, please make sure he gets that material before the meeting.
You got it.
Like to have everything wrapped up at the next, uh, the continuation of the hearing.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Now, we will continue on, where are you going? We'll continue on.
You're not done yet.
Yeah, the site plan review for the uh, five Harrington Street, um, that, um, the same rules apply. Anyone, uh, we're gonna give the applicant an opportunity to speak, and the board will ask its questions, then the community can ask theirs. Uh, please, uh, one, say your name and address, so I know that you've uh, and I'll let you know when you have an opportunity to speak. Um, so, John, take it away.
Hi, good evening. I'm here tonight representing Determination Inc., James and Mehan for a site at five Harrington Street. Um, we are in for a site plan modification, amended site plan at five Harrington. Um, the commercial site, it's in a commercial district, was approved for eleven storage buildings with associated storage for small contractors or uh, tradespeople to store their goods. Um, we are currently uh, leasing the, the lot to Amazon um, for storage of their trailers. Um, the trailers come into the lot, unhook, leave the trailer in the lot for anywhere from three to five days. Um, then come back and uh, take the um, trailers to whichever site they're going to. Um, we are, we have gotten a determination from the building inspector that um, this is allowed under um, section thirty-one of, of the use by law for storage of wholesale goods. Um, I'm gonna turn this over to our, our law, my lawyer, Joe Antonellis, and then I will deal with any engineering company, any engineering questions.
Good evening. For the record, Joseph Antonellis, my office is in Milford. I just want to clarify that the trailers that come to this property are filled with product. They are not empty trailers. This is not necessarily the. They are not empty trailers. This is not necessarily the storage of trailers. It's the storage of goods which are being wholesaled by our tenant and they happen to be being placed in trailers. But it is not a yacht for storing trailers. It is a yacht for storing trailers, all of which have bulk goods and then primarily paper goods and other products that Amazon would be delivering to their multiple warehouses that are in the area.
Okay.
Anything else to add, John?
Um, so the current site, yeah, I did get a letter from Graves Engineering on the amended site plan. Um, I, once again, um, I didn't get it until today at, this one I got at three fifteen. Um, I was able to update some of the items on it. Um, I believe if I go down, I'm gonna read. Item one was, if not already done, the planning board wished to inquire with the building inspectors on enforcement officer. Um, I believe that, that has been done. I believe uh, the building um, commissioner has spoken to you, Bill. I'm not a hundred percent sure, but he told me he was going to.
Yes, he told me.
The required parking setback distance need to be clearly shown on the, on the plans. I have added those to the plans. Um, the, the closest, the minimum setback is twenty feet. There is one setback that is at twenty feet and that is a corner of the lot that abuts uh, my client's other land, Determination Inc. All the rest of the uh, setbacks are a minimum of twenty-five feet from the property line. Um, and that is the existing conditions plan. You wanna probably go to the third sheet, you know?
Sure, I went to the second one, of course.
Um, so that, I have added that to the plans, which you don't have yet, um, but I did do that. Um, he, he also put that if there are, so this is a site that we've already built, um, uh, ingrained to the original site plan without the building. So what we're asking here is not to put the buildings on the site plan and to strike the lot as shown. Um, if there's any existing utility systems, he says they need to be shown. I've added, um, there's, we have installed uh, Doc Sky lighting on poles um, around the site. And I've, I've uh, I've put the electric line and how they connect um, on the, on the new plans. Um, the, the plans need to show onsite storage. I added the storage along the back berm. So if you're looking from Harrington Street all the way in the back, I've extended, I've done a snow storage area that's twelve feet wide and two-hundred-and-fifty-six feet long along uh, the back berm, which is, would be the, I guess that would be the southerly side of the lot. Um, uh, the hydrology and comp, the hydrology computations and stormwater management. Um, we didn't take into it, uh, um, Jeff Graves' quote that we didn't take into. I thought nothing changed on the lot, but each building had a small recharge chamber system for the roof drains. When we get rid of the buildings, we're losing that recharge. So um, we have to update our stormwater management plan. I had, I found out about that. Um, I realized that earlier in the week and I have increased the size, not from Jeff, I just realized it. And I have increased the size of the basin, so I have new grading around the basin showing an enlarged, uh, an enlarged basin and forebay for the drainage uh, to get the recharge to work. Um, we have to get Jeff uh, the new, the new uh, drainage report. Um, we will do that. Um, he also has that we were showing a brass channel. We have a rip route channel out there. That will all be taken into uh, consideration in the new drainage report. Um, also, the electric structure wasn't installed in the basin yet. Uh, that, it's on, it's ordered, it just hasn't been delivered yet, so that's why that has not been done. Um, since we were in front of the board, um, we have done extensive work to try to screen um, this lot. There's a, a berm anywhere from six feet to eight feet high around the entire site. There is uh, ten to twelve foot white pines, uh, planted twelve feet feet on center, on top of that berm around the entire site. Um, and then we have also added a four-foot chain link, added chain link fence um, on all the sides that uh, we have a butters on. Um, there was a typographical lever um, on one of the, on the spillway of the basin. It was typed in as two-ninety-five point one. It was supposed to be three-ninety-five point one. I've changed that. Um, item fourteen was the photometric need to be extended to the southwestern property line. Um, our light, the lighting company that we buy the lights from does do the photometrics and like I said, I got this at three-ten today. Um, I've emailed them that request and I should have that planned within a couple of days. Um, we have submitted a, a small traffic. I had um, Tetra Tech, which is a national company, um, do uh, traffic counts for a couple of days out there. The average trips per day um, were um, uh, twenty uh, I believe twenty-eight, fourteen in and fourteen out on one day and twenty-four on another day, twelve in and twelve out. Um, very minor traffic. Um, they had minor impact uh, to the traffic. Um, uh, for the, for the lot. Uh, we reduced the, when we enlarged the basement, the um, number of park trailer spaces is gonna come down to fifty-six. Um, on the new plan also, um, I, I wish I could uh, I, I don't know if you, if I put it up on uh, on the screen. I don't know if you can screen to it. Um, I know I talked to, uh, there was, there's some question about the time limits on the lot. Um, the Amazon trailers, uh, there were no trailers in after midnight, I believe, on any of the traffic studies. But once in a while, there are stragglers. They're coming late. Um, we are proposing rather than put a time limit on the lot, that we would lock the back gate that would um, stop traffic from going in front of the residential house across the street and, and leave the um, the five or six parking spaces. I have them shaded on another plan. On the um, southerly corner of the lot, which is way back near the basin, um, open and there is a, there will be a guard and a guard shack on this site twenty-four hours a day. Any trucks that come in ten, after nine o'clock would be required to park in that back corner of the lot to limit any noise on the site. And they would not be allowed to go out the um, the southerly gate. They only be allowed to go out the um, front gate. Um, other than that, like I said, the site is fully built. Uh, other than the striping, this is an amended site plan. We're uh, we, what we're asking to remove the eleven buildings that we're gonna put there. Um, the traffic engineer uh, felt in his report that the eleven buildings would uh, be more traffic than what is currently happening on the site. Um, if there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Um, I'm gonna open it up to the board now. Uh, one question I had, John, was uh, it, do they have the ability to keep that rear gate closed all the time?
Yes, it's a locking gate. Yes, we can put a lock on it. There is, there's plenty of room inside the site for the trailers to get around without using that factor.
Uh, and uh, how many uh, trailers do you expect to be on this lot at one time?
Um, it, it will hold six trailers. Um, at the time, I don't believe there's been more than fifteen or sixteen trailers in any.
And all the other ones are gonna be vans placed, located?
No, no, no. These are only trailers and uh, no tractors. They come in with the tractor trailer, they park and unload it, and it stays on the lot loaded with goods for three to five days until they're ready to unload and then they come and pick it up and pull it off the lot.
What's the expectation of uh, the number that's gonna be there? Is there any expectation?
Um, there's not. They have multiple lots in, in the area. This is one of the, the lesser desirable lots because it's not as close um, to where they are and they have to come through uh, Milford basically to get here and um, they don't come, they don't come the back way down sixteen. They're mostly coming from the Hopedale side. Um, so um, we, we don't know. I mean, at Christmas time, I'm gonna assume it's gonna fill up for maybe two months or, you know, it's gonna be uh, busier at Christmas time, but after that, like I said, all summer, there's been anywhere from, I've been up there where there's been four trailers there and I've been up there when there's been fifteen trailers there. Um, I've yet to see, I've yet to see one coming out of the site and I've been there thirty times, but there are trailers, there are tractors. I mean, there are tracks, uh, trailers there, not tractors. They do leave a trailer on site, but that's to move them around if they have to. Oh, no, they don't. I'm sorry. I saw a trailer there one time. I thought it was for moving the, the trailers, but um, it's just been informed they don't move. Give me a track, the track reflection of the trailer.
Um, John, has the uh, lighting plan been approved by uh?
Um, so, um, yeah, so I submitted a lighting plan with this and I have to, one of the things from comments is what, that I have to extend it further at the southwest. I guess the southwestern side. Hang on one second. It's number fourteen on his letter. Yeah, the southwestern property line, uh, which would be the site, which would be the side um, in the back. So if you're looking from Harrington Street, the back of the lot. So there is a berm and trees there. Um, and we did do Doc White, Doc um, Doc Sky lighting, but it's, it's the same thing. Once they're on a pole, if you're looking up at them and you can see the bulb, it, they look right even though the light is not escaping uh, over the property line. Um, we do have. Yeah, we do actually, we've already, we've spoken with um, I think one of the neighbors in the backyard and he, he, he had a problem. So we, we have custom shields made, made by A.S. Jones, you know, so the lights, um, so it shades them from looking at them from the backside. It, it, it's, um, it's trouble we have all the time when you can look up and see the light bulb instead of, I mean, they shine down, but you can still see the light bulb if you're on another lot. So yes, we have custom shields, me and me.
Okay. Does any other members have any questions? Um, I don't know if feedback going on in there uh, but it's causing a nightmare over here.
Can you hear me better now?
Yeah, it uh, it sounds, that sounds much better, actually.
Appreciate that. Okay, thanks for that feedback. Um, as I said, my name is Freddie Steinman. I'm uh, uh, an elder on the elder board for the Menon Community Church and I am a resident from Milford, one thirty, um, I'm in thirty-five Field Pond Road in Milford. And um, I actually had a few questions. First question is, uh, and I'm assuming this um, is more to do with the time of operations. Will that be normal hours of operations or is it twenty-four-seven?
Um, that's something we were just uh, discussing. We had mentioned uh, when the applicant had submitted the application, we had mentioned possible hours of operation. Um, you know, I, I'm sure we'll be discussing that further as we go along here. Um, but yeah, I mean, there's a, you know, I think what the applicant has told us that they have a uh, small amount of traffic that comes through during the night. Um, an occasional one, John?
Yeah, they're just stragglers. Um, and I hate to have them sitting there parked waiting to get in the lot on the road or something and we thought the best way to handle it would be to bake, to put them in that, you know, five or six spots as far away from everybody as we could. So if we do get somebody that comes in during the night, they can pull in and like I said, there'll be a security guard there to direct them over to that back corner and they're in and out of there. And they won't be going through the back gate, so they will not be in front of those uh, you know, the two residential houses. I know, I think the church might be um, directly, I mean, one residential house. The church is pretty close to the lower driveway, but I don't believe there are hours of operation there overnight. Um, I threaten you if you're wrong there, if I'm wrong here. So I don't believe that would affect the church too much. Um,
Do these vehicles?
We're trying to do everything we can to um, minimize any impact on the residents in the area. Uh,
Do these vehicles idle? Um?
No, we're, we're actually gonna add signage that there's no idling of vehicles. I think probably the biggest concern is the backup beeper. Um, and there's nothing we can do about that. That's federally mandated. We can't have, there's no way to turn them off or unhook them, so I just thought the best way to handle it would be to move those as far away from everybody as we can.
So first and foremost, thank you for uh, that consideration. I think that the biggest concern we have um, and is the, where you have the entrance gate, because we've been at the church when they come in and because of the fact that it's a tractor trailer, they have to have a wide turn and um, they have a very tough time maneuvering when we have vehicles parked in the parking lot. And so the request would be for them, and I know this goes against the conversation so far, but is to have them actually enter through the back because uh, back gate, because that way the, we don't have the concerns of vehicles that stands on our properties, because it's uh, our post box or mailbox actually have been um, have been hit um, in the, in the past few months. So just to kinda request if that's possible.
Well, okay, so I, I know that's gonna be a problem with uh, the, about it directly across, but um, maybe we can look at widening that apron onto, on our property and make that turn easier. Um, and that, that would take care of that, so they're not, they don't have to come across the road to leave or get in, so. Yeah, so I mean, you can widen that, that apron there, so they have more room to get in and out of the lot if that seems to be a problem. Um, or we, or if, if the board sees that, we can open the back gate and lock the front gate. Um, I, it's, that's a, that's a matter for the board to discuss, but like I said, if the back gate, if the board wants the back gate um, locked, we can widen that rounding where they pull in and out, so that they have more room to get in and out of there. We own the land next to it, so um, it's not a problem widening the entrance.
John, I appreciate that and I'm, I'm trying to be also accommodating, not having to have you do any additional work to the property. I think that there's a lot of good investment. We can see that the property has been well maintained and upgraded, so for us, it would be kind of an easy fix if it's, uh, if the board will allow for you to have the back gate uh, as the entrance, you know, that way I think from a concern with the uh, vehi- vehicle turning as well as the noise that's right across the street from where our church would be, um, would be appreciated.
Okay.
Well, the, I, I think the problem with that is, I mean, and I, I'm not a, I think that you've got residents that live in the back at, and at two o'clock in the morning, if there is a straggler that comes in, residents that are there sleeping are more important to be in the church at two AM. So, and that's my opinion would be if it's not too much trouble to widen the front gate access would probably make the residents a little happier.
So could, could we, could we meet each other halfway? They say during a Sunday operation, have the backyard used during the day of working um, operation hours? And then for the rest of the time, have that go through the back, uh, the front normal gate, but I think during the uh, times of service and the Sunday morning and Sunday evenings, if we can maybe use Sundays as the uh, back as the um, operating during normal hours.
Uh, do they use that uh, on Sundays?
Yep.
Yeah, I would, I would say it's seven days a week, Bill. Um, there's, there's trailers moving around all the time.
And what are your hours on Sunday?
Uh, church on Sunday, when we back in, um, it's from nine o'clock on a Sunday morning. Obviously, you say eight-thirty in the morning starting to have people coming in and we are there till twelve, twelve-thirty in the mornings and then evenings is from around uh, six o'clock um.
Yeah, so I think we could use the back gate during the hours.
Sorry, uh, sorry, at Wednesday nights as well. Sorry, there's Wednesday nights, we have a uh, study group as well in the mornings as an evening. So two days a week, Wednesdays um, and um, Sundays, and that will be the same time for both on uh, the weekday as well as on a Sunday. So we are, we, so, so the request is for.
What is that? How many uh, you know, how many people uh, come to uh, you know, the church on Sundays and the church on Wednesdays? I mean, you know, we have to, we have to be fair to all businesses. I mean, this is a, believe it or not, it is a commercial. It is a general business road. Um, it's been like that for, for the fifty years.
Yeah, we, we appreciate that and we're trying to be uh, good neighbors and citizens as well. So I think, um, just to answer your question, we have anything from seventy to eighty attendees on a Sunday. Um, and so if you look at our parking lot, it is a tight fit for us there, so we will be taking all of that spot. So that's why we had the concern about the vehicles, because we actually had to move vehicles uh, to Sundays, um, where uh, the vehicle could, um, as a truck is trying to turn in, we actually had to move our vehicles so that the truck could, truck could make that wide turn. So um, on Wednesdays, this, this.
So, so Bill, I, I really think I could fix that with a wide turning radius on our property and then that would go away.
Okay, I mean, it's an extra expense, but I mean, we, we understand that, but also from a noise perspective, we would like to just make sure, and I understand, I think as you mentioned previously, John, I think with the Christmas and the holidays coming up, that's our biggest concern, because I think we all see a lot more activity that we've seen so far. because I think we all see a lot more activity that we've seen so far, and so for us, it's just having the ability to, uh, be able to worship in a environment that's conducive, uh, not from noise, and we don't want to halt any progress in terms of the business development for the community, but at the same time for the church, we also want to make sure that we are giving ourselves the ability to do that in a, in a, in a, in a fashion that is not going to be hindered by noise.
Understood, and we've done, we've done, like I've said, we've done extensive screening, um, and the berm and the fence, uh, we added the fence just for noise. Um, not because we already had the berm and, uh, trees for sight, and we've added the fence with slats for noise. Um, hopefully that'll help. I think, I think the noisiest part of this process, to be honest, was when we were, we, all these slopes are riprap. Um, probably when we were constructing the slopes and putting the riprap was the loudest portion of the site, and, um, personally, I feel that the, the site will be quieter since we're done construction. We do have to get back in there and do some work on the basin, but once that's done, uh, I think the site will settle in, and I don't think it'll be too bad.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I, I hear you and I appreciate that. I'm, I just want to make sure from a, we, 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 we will actually only have the full effect, um, of it once we get into a more busier season.
Yeah, I agree with that. Yeah, I'm not trying to downplay that at all.
No, no, I, and I, and I know that as well, as well, so, I mean, I think for, um, I, I don't know what's the, Mr. Chairman, what is the, the next steps if we can put a request? Or what, what would the steps be to kind of get to a mutual ground of making sure that our neighbor, uh, the, the, the resident next to us, which I think their house is in the market as well, but apart from that, uh, the fact that they're to the left of us, how can we accommodate, um, both of them? Because I do appreciate the fact that, that we don't want trucks in the middle of the night, um, but in terms of a very limited two days, two, uh, periods of hours, if there's a, or time periods that we can have some sort of a concession that there is minimal or no, well, preferably no, uh, vehicles coming in and out for at least those time periods. I know this is hard for a business, but it's not, um, that we are asking for complete shutdown.
Unfort- unfortunately, uh, we can try to do some concessions to make that during those planning periods, maybe. But we really have no control of, like, we have no control over the time of the vehicles coming in and out.
Is, is, is that, is that something that we would need to kind of see if we can negotiate, um, with somebody like an Amazon to talk to them? Not that I think we actually will have any negotiation.
I think, so they're, I think their trucking business is separate from like Amazon. I, I don't even know where you would start, honestly.
Okay.
I, I don't even know where you would start.
I have a question.
Name and, uh, address, please.
Karen Lovejoy, fourteen Blackstone Street.
Yes, Karen.
First of all, I'd like to ask who owns the property? Second, I'd like to know who's gonna repair the road. It's totally ripped up. There's mud on both sides. There's metal coming up from the road. And that should not be the town, that should not be the town's responsibility. So who owns the property that can fix that road due to those trailers going in? I sent seven pictures to Terry Gale.
So I believe the landing road and the dirt that's torn up is on the owner's property of Determination Inc. It's a sprinkler system that is been run over. Um, the, the owner of the property is Determination Inc., um, the owner of Determination Inc. is Jason Meanan.
Do you have a name for Determination Inc.?
Uh, yeah, I just gave it to you. Jason Meanan.
That's what I thought. Okay, so he will be responsible for the road being repaved and repaired?
If, if there, if the tractor trailer trucks damaged the road, it would be his responsibility to repair it. That's correct.
Oh, they did damage it.
It's probably Amazon's responsibility to, um, repair it. But the dirt that's been torn up on that corner is all on Jason's property.
Now, why did you not tell the previous questioner that he could deal with Jason Meanan about this? You, you said you had no idea who he could deal with.
It's not that. No, so you can't, you can't deal with Jason Meanan about tra- about the trailers, because he just has, he leases the lot, he leases the lot. It's, it's the company that leases that, that is responsible for when the trailer's coming in and out. Jason has no say in that.
Okay, so Amazon's gonna fix the road?
Create the lot, build the site plan, and lease it.
And Amazon's gonna fix the road. I need to know who's gonna fix that road. It's a mess.
Where is the road broken?
At the beginning of the road. There's no curb left. There's metal.
It was that, it was never, that's on, that's on Jason's property.
Correct.
That's his property. That dirt that you've seen is Jason's property. That pipe that you've seen is Jason's property.
All right, if we could, uh, if I could step in here a second, um, now, it, uh, I haven't looked at the road myself. Um, Harrington Street was never, um, in perfect shape.
No, 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 no. I sent seven pictures to Gale. Have her show them to us.
Karen, I'm, I, Karen, I, I understand what you sent to Gale. I'm telling you what the, what the ability of the planning board is to, uh, manage, you know, yeah, we can, we can address impact fees, but it's as the, you know, it's as of a condition of the road itself. Um, I.
It's a mess.
I don't recall the last time that road was repaved. I don't think you blame the, the entire thing on Amazon. Um,
Come on, let's go look at it.
Excuse me, Karen. Ninety cars that show up at a, at a church, and prior to that, the Bright Oaks Club was located at that location and, and did extremely.
Bill, Bill, they built the cell phone tower down here with some.
Yes.
Cranes and heavy.
I, I have the picture in front of me. The, the, the road has been in, in tough shape for the last fifteen years. I mean, I see that the dirt and everything in the, in the, and all the stuff that the tractor tail trailers have been driving on the property of the apartment house. That's the, that's the, that's not town-owned property. The road is cracked and bent that way probably forever. Um.
Please just go look at it and tell me that was caused by cars. Please.
It's caused by old age.
No, it's not. It's caused by tractor trailers.
The, the side, the side of the road with the grasses.
Karen, I think the.
Laugh all you want, but I am not gonna take my taxes to pave a road that Jason Meanan and Amazon have ruined.
So I, I'd like to say something. So the section that I believe, I can't see the pictures. I wish I could, but the picture, the side of the road on the right side on the rounding, that's all that is, has the dirt and the torn up, is Jason Meanan's property. Um, that is not part of the road. There was no pavement there. That was grass, and there was a sprinkler system, and if you look, the pipe for the sprinkler system is probably showing in the, in the, um, picture, so, um, that would be his responsibility to fix, um, not the town residents. That is his property, and, um, if he wants to replant grass there, he can and fix the, the, um, irrigation, um, and if he wants to leave a dirt, I'm assuming he could leave a dirt.
And what about the left-hand side where it's all concrete ripped up?
I, I, I don't have any knowledge of that, and I don't know if they can bring the picture up.
I don't see any concrete. I see most damage. Are you talking the curb, the curb itself?
Right, the curb is all cracked and gone.
Uh, it's still there in this photograph.
I sent you seven.
Well, the granite curbing's still in this, the, one of the photos you sent.
What are you, ma'am, are you talking about? Are you talking about on the, on the Lianstein East side?
Both sides are broken up. Both, well, the right side doesn't even have granite. It doesn't have tire. It's all dirt.
Okay.
The left-hand side had a curbing, which the curbing is now in little tiny pieces.
Well, the picture you just sent us, that the curbing is still there, um, from what I'm looking at. It is a little bit of asphalt and sand from maybe, and from a heavy rain.
Are you, come on. What is the best, the kangaroo court?
I, I.
We're looking at your photos, Karen, so, I mean, as soon as they have.
Karen, this is John. One, you want me to look at the photos? So I can see them?
And I also, and I also took pictures of the lighting, which I was told was off at night. It's not off at night. It's going into people's bedrooms. This is tr- this is a truck stop. This is a highway, um, issue. This needs to be, no, this needs to go to town meeting to decide. It needs to go to town meeting to decide.
No, we, the, uh, you gotta understand the role of planning board and the process, Karen. This is a site plan review, okay? The process, and I don't know who's feeding your information, but the process is the way it breaks down. Application comes into the building department. Building department reviews it for use. If the use applies, planning's role, role in it is to, to, um, you know, set conditions. You actually, it, it's next to impossible to deny. Karen, don't speak when I'm talking.
I haven't said a word.
Oh, somebody, somebody was talking back there. Um, when, when, um, site plan review, it's extremely difficult to, to deny. We can set conditions to make it, to make it, uh, you know, to make the applicant utilize the property as we see fit. But this isn't a special permit. This is a site plan review. What's that?
It's a truck stop. That means highway. Are you going to now?
No, we, you know, the, the board, we have been, we have been addressed by zoning that this applies. So it's not, it's not the planning board's determination. We have zoning enforcement.
That's not me. That's somebody else.
No, that's, it's the process that, that, see, most people in town don't understand the process when an application comes in. Application comes in, goes to building. If there was a building on here, they determine about a building permit. When the building, when that goes, they, they look to see that it fits a use within the community. If, if it doesn't fit a use, then it's gonna go to special permit and then, and site plan review. If they apply use to it, then it goes, comes to planning board for site plan review.
And what happens now? You have to determine whether or not that's highway or general use.
No, we don't. We, all we're doing is setting guidelines for the site. That's why it's called site in review. It's not special permit. It's site plan review. Whoever's got their hands up, if they could just, when, uh, Karen's done speaking, just say your name and, um, and, uh, your address. It's easier than me trying to figure out how many people have their hands up, please.
Okay, listen, I am, I'm. I was wondering what the. Twenty, uh, cease and desist letter to the specific property was about, and so.
I can't hear you, Kristen. What you saying?
Regarding that.
I, I didn't, I didn't hear that question, Kristen.
I'm sorry.
No, I, I can't make it out.
My question is the cease and desist on this specific property that was dated May twenty-first, twenty-twenty.
Regarding what? I wasn't aware of it, Kristen, to be honest with you. I don't do zoning enforcement, so I don't know.
Yes, uh, Bill, Bill, this is John, that we had to come in for a site plan review.
For this specific property, twenty-first, twenty-twenty, that was specifically about operation ending, so I'm wondering, um, I think that Tim Icardi is the, uh, enforcement authority on that specifically. Planning board is superseding his enforcement authority on the specific item.
All I know, Kristen, is what I can tell you is, I wasn't aware of that. All I can tell you is that when it came to us, it came to us for site plan review. Now, if in fact that's the case, Kristen, um, even if we approve site plan review tonight, if there was an issue with use, that'd be, uh, you know, that, that zoning enforcement's department, they would have, before anything is done there, they would have to send it back to, uh, planning for special permit. I mean, there are processes in place to manage this stuff. You know, you don't. I can't hear you. Kristen, I can barely hear you.
Is it Kristen or is that Karen?
Is it Karen or, I don't know.
This is Kristen. Is there a better way?
Okay, Kristen, what's your last name? I never got it.
Uh, Attorney General because of.
She's not coming through at all.
Yeah, we can't hear you, Kristen.
What's her address?
This is going to be a problem for you, Bill.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, Bill, I, I think that, um, she has a problem.
I can't hear her, you know.
Yeah, I, she's not coming through with me either.
Maybe we should, maybe move on to the next, next.
So Bill, this is John. So there was a cease and desist issued by Tim Icardi, and that cease and desist was that we had to come in for a site plan review from amended site plan, which is what we are doing.
Correct, because I have that letter right in front of me.
And that's what Tim, uh, Tim suggested. You come for site plan review.
I believe so. I, I don't have the letter in the community, but I believe that's what it was for.
John, hold on a minute.
So with the coronavirus, it was, uh, a tough situation to get in front of us for such a review, but we are.
So are you saying that nobody else is specifically on this?
I, I can't, I'm sorry, Kristen, this is John. I can't, I can't hear you. You're, um, I don't know if you want to call in on the phone number. We might, we might be able to hear you.
Yes, please. Can you give me?
I, I, I can't hea- I can't.
Yeah, give her the phone number. It's gonna be on the, um, the agenda. The three-one-five.
Okay, it's, um, it's three-four-seven. Four-six-seven. One-four-three-four. Conference number, one-seven-seven, two-three-five, nine-three, um, da-da-da-da mark.
Pound sign.
Pound sign. Thank you.
Hashtag.
Yeah, 'cause I didn't get her name.
That little mark there.
No, that's the number of people. No, that's not the number of people. The individuals are.
Uh, Bill, Sherry's got her hand up.
Uh, yes, Sherry.
When, um, when are the traffic implications supposed to be looked at? Because I see those as being a huge factor in whether or not this should even be allowed.
Tractor, uh, traffic implications where? On sixteen or on the road itself?
On sixteen, absolutely, because I think what you said is the original plan was for contractors to store, to have like little storage areas for their things, and pickup trucks turning left off of Route sixteen onto Harrington Avenue are completely different than tractor trailers.
No, that.
Well, our, our town, our town consultant would look at the, um, would look at, you know, sightlines, issues, um, we, we have a state road there, um, so it would be, you know, it would, it would take an adverse amount of traffic to encumber, you know, a state road. Um, you know, fifty cars a day isn't gonna make a huge amount of difference. People don't realize most eight-to-ten-lot subdivisions in town produce thirty, over thirty cars a day, trips a day.
But it takes forever for a tractor trailer to get the clearance between vehicles coming. But it takes forever for a tractor trailer to get the clearance between vehicles coming from that in to be able to turn left onto that road.
And I, and I, I understand that, but, you know, it's, um, it's a situation where, you know, they're coming off a general business district, onto a general business dis, the business district that happens to be a, a state highway. Um, you know, it's high, it would be unreasonable for the board to make, to say unless there were sightline issues and, and issues of that nature, um, that would, uh, make that, you know, a severe unreasonable, uh, request. You know, we get these, you know, we get these questions all the time, whether it be a restaurant or a car dealership or whatever, you're gonna have impacts onto the roadway. Um, but, you know, it, it has to be clear and potential, like something's gonna, uh, create a a confluence of traffic. Uh, who knows? Do all the vehicles leave at the same time? Do, uh, you know, it, I mean, one tractor trailer pulling out at one time is not going to greatly affect the, you know, the traffic on Route sixteen.
Okay, but we're talking about pulling out, and I'm talking about pulling in because I have been stuck in the traffic heading towards Menden behind a tractor trailer who's waiting for an opportunity that is big enough for him to turn his vehicle left onto Harrington Avenue. And if it gets busier than the fifteen or fourteen inns per day, that's gonna back up. I mean, it already backed up pretty bad to the traffic lane at North Ave, but that's gonna back up really far, waiting for those tractor trailers to turn left onto Harrington.
Um, you know, I, I'm not sure what, what you're looking for, for an answer. Um, you know, unfortunately, person owns a piece of property there. If there wasn't, if there wasn't Amazon, uh, let's say he decided to put another church there, uh, certain amount of vehicles up there, and all of a sudden, on Sunday morning, we have ninety cars on one side and ninety cars on the other side, all exiting Harrington at the same time. What would the impact of that be as opposed to a tractor trailer pulling in?
Well, personally, if you're asking me, I would say that, you know, individual cars can zip out a lot more later.
That would be a great, that would be a great, great burden at both lights, the one in Hope deal and the one in Menden. That many vehicles exiting. You gotta remember, that person still has a right to do something with that property, whether they do this or something else. Something could end up there that, that isn't, you know, that is a greater impact than what we're looking at today.
Hi, Bill, this is John. Nothing backs up sixteen as much as the Menden drive-in does. The amount of cars going in and out of there on a, on a night.
As a safety issue guaranteed.
Yeah, and I don't believe we've had any, um, safety issues or any complaints from the police about tractor trucks entering or leaving the site as, as of this point. I, I haven't heard of it.
Mr. Chairman, this is Ferry Simon. I have a question for, um, and I know this is not necessarily the main aim of this, uh, this meeting, but uh, I am considered, uh, concern, um, concerned regarding the, uh, when it gets into the winter season with snow removal and that, and what that will look like. Have, uh, who do I talk to or how do we go about? Because that is a concern. If the road is already deteriorating and you have heavy vehicles that's gonna come in and out, that's not necessarily an issue for the applicant here with the, with the review, but as, as I'm thinking from a Menden community perspective, the road and the, and the shoveling and cleaning and clearing of snow, um, how that will impact the road conditions.
Uh, John, um, Bill, this is Damon.
Yeah.
I've been on the, I checked that road out today. Other than the entrance where the pictures that were sent to us, other than the entrance, the, the road going up in is in very nice shape. Other than that entrance where they, you know, where, where they've been driving on the grass in front of the house. I mean, I don't think there's a big issue with the roadway itself. I think maybe there's a little, couple little, the asphalt's getting cracked on the edge because they've been driving on the grass and on the dirt. So, I mean, I think it's, we're making somebody's telling us that the road is junk, but it's really not the road. Maybe it's two feet off the edge of the road and, you know, by a six foot area. I mean, this may be the situation we're in. Um, if that's something that's an issue, I mean, I'm, I think that John had said that he was going to correct it and maybe fix it and do something there on their property. Um, I mean, I, where are we? We gotta, I just, where are we going with this? We could be here till eleven o'clock tonight talking about what things might be going on or what may be happening. Where are we at?
Hi, hi, Damon. In regards to snow remove, snow removal, um, on the lot itself, all the snow, I have added a snow storage area along the back berm between the pavement and the back berm. Um, and the town plows Harrington Street, I believe there's a cul-de-sac down the back. That's as far as I know, just like they plow every other town street, um.
You won't have any, you won't have any
And the storage would be on the side opposite Harrington Street between the edge of the parking and the berm in the back.
Okay, so none of your snow will be out on Harrington Street, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Hey, Bill?
Yes.
It's Mark Reel.
Yes.
Four Lowell Drive. Um, I have a, a variety of questions. Uh, first question, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take them one at a time, cuz it goes, it's the easiest way to go about it. Um, so this may not be a question for you, but maybe for the applicant. And it is, um, under what allowable use did the building commissioner classify this use under? I think it was mentioned, but I just wanted to hear it again.
This is, uh, this is Attorney Anthony Antonellis. The, um, building inspector made a determination that, uh, under the table of uses number thirty-one, quote wholesale business and storage, provided there is no manufacturing or processing of materials. So we have a business that is wholesale and stored. That's an allowed use in the town of Menden business district. Subject of site plan review.
Yeah, so I think there's some, uh, concerns about that still, but thank you for that. Um, so I can tell you in terms of my personal experience with the traffic issue, more than once, more than twice, I've seen people nearly slam into the tractor trailer truck pulling out of Harrington Street, creating a safety hazard. Also, I've been up there to, uh, the board received some complaints earlier in the year. And I took a ride up to Harrington Street to check it out. And I couldn't pull into the street because there was a truck coming up the street, which creates a safety hazard if you go to turn, there's a vehicle blocking the entire road. There's no way you can fit a car next to one of these, these trucks coming down the street. And that's no one's fault, it's just a matter of fact that this road is not built to withstand the traffic that is currently being, you know, um, driven on this road. So I think there's a major safety issue here on top of, um, you know, it was mentioned that trailer, uh, the trucks aren't idling. I know that that's been disputed from neighbors I've spoken with at all hours of the night. Um, we have, you know, uh, let's see. I think the zoning issue, and, and I can understand you, Bill, on, on that being somewhat separate, but I think it should also be a concern of the, of the planning board that you had the building department say that this was a non-allowable use and issued a cease and desist, but then turned around and said, well, actually, it is an allowable use. Well, that should raise your flag.
If I, if I think Gil was commenting on that letter earlier, Mark? Gil, you still there?
Yes, of course I'm still here.
Read that letter aloud.
Right in front of me.
Read that letter aloud, aloud.
Okay. Please be advised that I serve as the building inspector and zoning enforcement officer for the town of Menden. In this capacity, I must advise you that your property located at five Harrington Street is in non-compliance with the town of Menden zoning bylaws. Article three use regulations, section three point zero one, allowable land uses A. No land shall be used and no structure shall be constructed, reconstructed, altered, expanded, erected or used for any purpose except, except for and in accordance with the table of uses, table A, including the notes to table A, the provisions of the town of Menden zoning bylaws and all other applicable federal, state and local rules, laws, statutes and regulations. As you may know, your property is situated in the general business zoning district where a trucking depot is not an allowable use. If you fail to comply with this order, the town of Menden will be forced to take further action, including the issuance of fines pursuant to section one point oh four, four of the zoning bylaw. Please also be advised that you have the right to appeal the order contained within this letter by the filing of a timely petition with the Menden zoning board of appeals as permitted under Massachusetts general law, chapter forty-eight.
Okay.
And then we, he received, um, um, an answer from Jason Meehan. Do you want me to read that?
Yeah, um, no, well, okay, I'll let you do that.
Okay, we have received the Mending zoning bylaw article three and the notes to table A and disagree with your categorization of our use as a trucking depot. By definition, a trucking depot is a place for storing motor vehicles. Not only are we not storing motor vehicles, we are not storing vehicles of any kind at any time. We are merely parking trailers for the purpose of storing wholesale goods and materials in accordance with an approved use on Dementin zoning bylaws, article three, so on. We can only think you might have misunderstood these trailers to be actual motor vehicles. However, that is not the case. In light of this new information, we can only assume that we are properly zoned for storage of wholesale goods and materials. I encourage you to come by the property, take a second look and let me show you around. Perhaps then you would reevaluate your opinion in this matter. Sincerely, Jason Meehan. And he sent that to, um, June first, two thousand twenty.
Holy shit. All right. If we can go back to the applicant, yeah.
Bill? It's Mark Reel. Um, okay, so the letter was sent as an official letter from the town as the building inspector and zoning enforcement officer, and it said at the end that you have the right to appeal the order contained within this letter uh, by filing a timely petition to the Menden ZBA. Okay?
Right.
That is the process, and, and you had mentioned earlier, Bill, that we're talking about process and how things should be processed through our town government. And so the letter was received by Mr. Meehan um, disputing the findings of the town building inspector and zoning enforcement officer, and therefore should have petitioned to the Menden ZBA as process would provide so that we would go forward and, and the ZBA would determine whether or not the applicant was really in the right on this. And that can happen, and we can all agree that things happen where, you know, appeal, the ZBA will overturn some, something, but
Mark, let me ask you a question.
Yeah.
Uh, what's that have to do with site plan review? Cuz we can approve a site plan review if they don't have correct zoning.
Well, well.
They still can't do it.
Got it, but what my point is to you is that as the board that comes up with these regulations to put forth to the people of Menden to vote on, you have an applicant that is before you today that is operating without approval of the town under a cease and desist.
Hold on, um, this is just, just to add on point, Mark, this is Tom Morales from fifty-two Millville Road. The, uh, traffic study from July tenth mentions that the, um, storage use was, was terminated and that it was now going to be a, a trucking yard.
From Hope. Where'd that come from?
This, this is from Tetra Tech. It's posted on the, uh,
Right on the website.
Right on the website.
Okay.
This is from
Yeah, I see that in the, um, in the traffic report that it's currently, um, the current use is a tractor trailer parking
facility.
Not in the table of use.
Right, and that, that is not in the it's not in the table of uses.
So if I may, this is, uh, Joseph Anthony on behalf of the applicant, um, the, um, the, the, the reason we got back to the board was because we had originally intended to build buildings on this site, and now we're not gonna build buildings in lieu of storing material inside buildings. We're storing them inside of trailers that are being brought to the property on a temporary basis. There is no storage of motor vehicles on the property. There's storage of containers that, uh, are towed or, or trucked to the facility. Uh, Tetra Tech's comment, uh, is, uh, does not indicate that there's, uh, tractors there, but rather trailers. Tetra Tech would hide to determine, um, what came in and out because, uh, we could have buildings there and, uh, we could still have tractor, tractor trailers coming back and forth and delivering products to those buildings, and we could be warehousing inside those buildings. So, uh, the reality is, is that the trailer are serving, uh, a, the purpose of being buildings uh, on the property, they're doing the same function. Uh, the, the difference being is, is that as opposed to trucks coming in and unloading and loading, the trucks stay loaded. It is that, if you recall, I opened the remarks when John was talking about the site, I added that the, uh, trailers are never empty. We will not allow empty trailers. This is not a trailer storage yard. It is a facility for warehousing of product inside of trailers that are brought to the site and then brought plate, other places. So it is a temporary basis for each ware, small warehouse.
That's a really interesting way to spin it, okay.
And I don't know who's making that comment back, cuz you didn't, you didn't state your name.
Uh, Mark Reel, Mark Reel.
Thank you. And what's your address, Mr. Reel?
Four Lowell Drive.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just think there's, uh, like I said, Bill, I'll, I'll end my comments with just that there are serious concerns in the community and as well as what I have brought to you tonight about the, even just the fact that this is an allowed use. So, um, I think it's under the, the planning board's purview in the terms of you are elected as a board to pay attention to these things. So I'm just bringing it to your attention.
Yeah, Mark, it's certainly not under site plan review.
No, I get it.
I mean, if they, if there's a special permit application or we determine that a special permit application's necessary, uh, once again, there's a process within the community. Goes to zoning, goes to building, the zoning enforcement makes a determination to the applicant. If, if we disagree, um, or, you know, the town is, you know, obviously, that can be looked at, but certainly not under site plan review. And that's what we're here tonight. We took an application for site plan review this evening.
Tom Morales, fifty-two Millville Road. Um, so how long is each, um, storage structure going to be there? Since we're now defining trailers as a structure.
Um, they're on average, uh, this is John Nannott. Uh, on average, I believe they're there anywhere from three to five, three to seven days before they leave the site. Um, and like I said, there's no tractor trailers on the site. They come, they unload, they leave the trailer there for three to five days, they come back, three to five days, shut up and bring it.
Because, because our, our zoning bylaws only, uh, allow portable storage containers to be allowed as an emergency temporary situ, uh, solution during construction, reconstruction or renovation. Are these portable storage containers then?
No. No, they, they, they No, they're, they're, they're vehicles that are used, they're, they're structures that are used in warehouses.
So they are tractor trailers, then?
They are those.
They're not, they're not containers.
All right, please address those questions to the board. It looks like that, um, determination, the determination of whether this needs a, uh, needs a special permit or, or, or not, I mean, you know, that would need to, uh, be addressed in another venue. Um, obviously, we can, we can do that, and we can...
It was a public hearing, correct?
It would, no, yeah, but this is a site plan review, Tom.
Mr. Chairman, sorry, Mrs. Chairman?
It wasn't even proper notification for, I can't hold a special permit tonight.
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I?
Sorry.
Sorry. Can I make a motion that we kind of postponed until we've actually got this violation or cease and desist letter addressed? Because it seems to me that is causing a lot more trouble, and it kind of makes the challenge of making a ruling on a site map, because I agree with you, if that's the purpose of this committee, we have to take into account that before we move forward to be, I think that would be the best path of action moving forward.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to take your time, and I don't know what you're going to say. I was just going to point out that the gentleman who just spoke may have wanted to make a suggestion. He certainly can't make a motion, he's not a member of the board.
Right, correct.
And procedurally, that would be inappropriate. Also, I just want to comment again on the, on the cease and desist letter. It was not enforced after Mr. Meehan responded to the building inspector and offered an alternate view of what the property was being used for. So again, we're back here for a amended site plan, because we are no longer going to have the building. Uh, the drainage is going to change. We have to update the, uh, lighting, and, uh, obviously, we had to add some snow storage, which again, I, you know, I'll comment, you're in, you're in site plan review, so we're, we're going to be one of the few facilities in the Town of Mendon that have been subject to site plan review recently, and we actually have places on our own property to take care of that, you know? So that, I think we should be looking at the four corners of the plan and discussing it based on the site plan criteria, and if people have other issues, they can address them at a forum where it's appropriate. It's not appropriate here.
Mr. Chairman, who was that speaking? They didn't mention their name or address.
I, I did, it's, uh, Attorney Antonellis, I identified myself.
Hmm.
Is that the guy with the...
Um, it's, uh, you know, once again, you know, we advertised and show up to a site plan review as required by, uh, by, um, the zoning. That's what they, that's what was requested. Um, I wasn't, you know, kind of caught me by surprise that there was such a, there's such an outburst of, uh, the, the use at this point. Thought that had been resolved a while back. Um, but once again, we're only here to hear a site plan. Um, I can't take questions of a, uh, of a special permit, you know, because it wasn't advertised as that.
Well, Tom Marali, 52 Millville Road, wouldn't the way this site plan is being presented significantly change the use as it was originally permitted, or as originally approved?
Well, I mean, it depends upon how you look at that. Uh, do you look at that as because they're mobile in, in a trailer? That's different than if, uh, Mr. Meehan constructed even one building. Let's say he amended his site plan for one building that he, he was going to administer, uh, all this product out of. Um, we basically, you know, we allow that use.
But I think definitely the use changed from, from it being a storage facility with buildings to being essentially a lot for trailers or, or portable storage units, which are only allowed as temporary solutions?
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying, Tom. Um, but once again, you, you understand the difference between a site plan review, or do I need to bring up the town's document regarding site plan review? The controls of site plan review are only that you actually can't make a determination on whether the use is allowable or not. You make a use, you make your determinations based on what they, that they followed the regulations regarding what the lot looks like, and, and, and all the stormwater management, everything else that goes into it, which they, they supplied to our town consultant. That town consultant came back with an affirmative answer. Um, and then any other conditions we'd like to apply, but it's near impossible to deny a site plan review.
So Bill, Mark, you're here?
Yes. Would you like me to bring up the page of a...
I'm gonna, I'm just gonna have a clarification, I think will help everyone here.
Yeah.
And, and it's something I somewhat understood, but, um, so site plan review then means that despite whether or not it's an allowable...
Yeah, because they still have to have all other approvals that the town made needs necessary.
Right, that's, that's fine. So despite whether or not the lot is, is allowed to be used as what is being used here, you still would go through with the site plan review to establish what the site would look like.
That's correct.
Okay, just wanted, I think that's helpful for...
Once they submit an application, once they submit an application, the town's on the clock.
Right.
Okay? We only have a certain amount of time to hear the application and either approve or deny, which in site plan review, there really isn't a denial process. Um, it's a process where you're liable to set conditions.
Um, Kevin Fields, 135 Blackstone Street. Uh, Mr. Emersonino, question for you. Um, if, um, you made a comment earlier about the planning board being responsible for determining appropriateness of a proposal, correct?
As far as...
In other words...
What do you mean? That's kind of a broad statement.
Well, if someone comes in and says, "I want to put up a circus on North Avenue..."
They don't come into, they don't come into planning. They, they come into building. Application goes to building first.
Okay, so in, in what part of the process does the community have the opportunity to say, "This is, you know, not a good idea," or "It's a great idea, let's go with it," and, um, because my understanding is the planning board has the role of representing the community, so...
Correct, and when we've, when we've set forth the bylaws, and we have public hearings on the bylaws, and then we bring them to town floor...
Yep.
That's who, that's when the community's voice needs to be heard, and no matter how many times I discuss that and talk about that, you know, unfortunately, that doesn't always occur. But, you know, we set the planning for the town.
Yep.
Doesn't mean we're the enforcement officer. As a matter of fact, if I go and enforce something, and, uh, I hate to say this, but I think I actually got threatened by, uh, the applicant's attorney one time, because I was overstepping my bounds and trying to stop something that was happening, because it's not the role of planning.
Yep. Yep, but if, if someone were to come in with a completely absurd proposal, and you knew it was not going to be to the benefit of the community, what's the role of the planning board? I mean, can they say, "No, come back to us with something that's more appropriate"?
Yeah, and then we do that often, you know, if, if someone was, like, if we were handling a special permit, we didn't feel the use fit, you know, then, then we could deny, you know, the, the special, special permit, um, or the site plan, we can set the guidelines for the site plan, and that's, that's basically what a site plan review is.
Right.
You set the guidelines for the site. Special permit, it was where the use applies. Uh, I was informed that when it, when it got to us, that the, the use was, uh, uh, on the, on the use table was, uh, use 31. Um, you know, I've looked at it, um, you know, the thing is that if you look in our use table, and, you know, maybe it wasn't at the time when it was thought up and written, um, a lot of times we look at what other towns are doing, and we kind of, you know, and other towns do the same to us. I get calls all the time, and, you know, maybe, but that's kind of, it's kind of broad. It's kind of gray. Maybe it wasn't defined as well as it should have been, and maybe that's something we can look at going forward.
Yeah.
But, you know, looking at, at 31 today, I sit there and say, you know, I mean, there's an argument there for it both ways. I mean, it's, it's just a gray area. And, but, you know, the, the thing is, it's not for the planning board to decide, and a town needs to be careful when they're being unreasonable.
Right.
You know, and, and those are the things I always caution Mendon on. I mean, is, you know, I tried, that's why I wrote bylaws, because everything in Mendon or past 10 years ago was special permit. Everything that you look, driving down Route 16 and 140, was special permit, because almost nothing was an allowable use in Mendon.
Yep.
So every application went through the special permit process, and stuff got built, because you know what? All it takes is the wrong applicant, and you're facing legal challenge, and our bylaws are only as good as they can stand up in court.
Right.
It's something I always refer to when I'm standing on town floor. Uh, we write them a certain way that we think we're protected, we have legal look them over, um, and, uh, you know, we try and do the right thing to represent the community of Mendon. Does it always happen that way? No, but back what, before, Mendon had, would have had a much harder time battling, that a, battling an application, because nothing was allowed. So I made some uses allowable, so it gave us actually better standing in court if that was to happen.
Okay.
If everybody follows me, but...
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah, I didn't mean to get off on a tangent here, but...
All right, Bill. Let me just say, is Mr. Antonellis, you got a question?
Yes, I, I did, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Tenio. I, I was going to ask if the board would like to get back to the four corners of the site plan, uh, that...
Yeah, actually, I was just going to suggest that, but Mr. Antonellis, if I could hold on to one second, I had opened this to the community, and I still, I, people, I, I, I think I said from the beginning that, you know, don't raise your hand, but we're going to go to Don Morn right now, because it looks like he's had his hand up for a while.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is Don Morn, can you hear me?
Yes.
Actually, it's a very simple question. If I review the act...
Yes, please.
I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, 36 Crestwood Drive, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Uh, if I, if I read the site plan application, um, and it says, obviously, we all know it was originally approved for different use, so they're trying to amend the original use to basically remove the buildings, stripe the parking lot, add light poles, fencing, additional berm, and buffer trees. Then when I, but then when I read about the completion date, it says, "All, all work is already completed except for the striping."
That is correct.
So we're approving something that's already been completed before they, they say basically did the work before they got the approval to amend the site plan, is that correct?
Uh, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and it's, I don't think they, uh, because they already had a site plan approved, and this happens a lot, Don, to be honest with you. I mean, if we're going to look at guilty parties, they run up and down, uh, the community, um, with, you know, they got an approved site plan, they're changing what they're doing, do they always run back to planning? Uh, not until they go to zoning and, and zoning says, "Hey, you need a site plan review."
Yeah, no, I understand, thank, yeah, that, that, yeah, no, I understand, thanks for the clarification, it's just, it's, it's their risk in case they run into an issue later down the road, essentially, that's, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, do we have anybody else? Uh, I got other hands up here, hold on. Tom, did you still have your question, or...
Yeah, you, Tom Marali? Tom Marali?
No, Tom Bellin.
Yes, um, I do have a question, um, and I'd like to talk to you, uh, John, about, uh, or if he could put more details out there about the drainage system, or the improvement that, improvements that he's going to make, and also the lighting. I know the new lighting's in.
Do I need to bring up that, uh, document again for you? Yeah. Yeah, Tom, on the drainage.
Um, I'd like to know more about it, because right now it, it looks unfinished, so I'd like to know more about what the...
Yeah, um, so, so the drainage is, this is a, so, and just so everybody knows, the site was constructed, um, the grading, the berm, the trees were all on the last site plan that was an approved site plan. So, um, nothing was constructed, other than the four-foot fence, which you don't need a permit in Mendon for, um, was the only thing that was added to the site. Um, so the things that we, we have to do to, to bring this up, so with the 12, with the 11 buildings that were on the other site plan, there were small recharge chambers in the ground to recharge the water off the roof drains. Um, now with no building, that water is, um, getting into the detention basin, so in order to get that recharge, we have to increase the size of the four-bay and the detention basin to supply more recharge. Um, the original site plan had, so this is, the whole, the whole site plan was always a sheet flow, and it sheet flows to the back of the lot into a swell. The swell goes into a four-bay, um, the four-bay goes into the detention basin, and then out through an infrastructure. Um, so one of the comments on the comment letter was that originally it was a grass swell, we did a riprap swell, so we're going to try to accommodate for that in our drainage report, and if we can't, we'll have to switch it back to a grass swell. Um, other than that, the site was constructed, that's why it was, it's fully built out. All the grading would have been the same if the buildings were there or not, it was always a sheet flow to a, a, a swell in the back, water quality swelled down into the four-bay, four-bay into the basin and out. Um, as for lighting, um, the lighting is all DocSky compliant lighting, um, it meets the Town Amendment regulations for how much light is coming off the site, but in all cases with those, when they're on a pole that's, uh, 15 feet high, if you're standing down low outside of the property and looking up at them, you can see the light bulb, even though the light isn't extending onto the properties around it, you can see the bright light bulb. So we do have AS Jones making, um, uh, making shields for the backs of the light bulbs, so that when people look at the lights from their yards, they're not going to be able to see directly into the light bulb. You're always going to see that, uh, a property is lighted, it's, it's, the bylaw is that the light doesn't extend, only a certain amount of light can extend past the property line, which is very little. Um, so Doc, DocSky compliant lighting directs the light directly down, it doesn't shine up in the sky, it doesn't shine out onto the properties behind it. Uh, but if you're standing on a lot below that and looking up at it, you can still see the light bulb. So we are trying to get some custom, um, shields made, so that, um, people can't see those light bulbs from their houses.
John, thank you, uh, the, um, the temporary lighting that was there before is awful, because it was shining through their house.
Yeah.
Lighting is better, but it's, I'm glad to hear your plans to, uh, take care of some of the issues with the shining, still shining horizontally as opposed to straight down.
Yeah, so there's going to be some shields going up, um, I, I, I believe Jason talked to a few of the abuders about it, and, uh, it has, has got AS Jones working on, uh, making , uh, sheet metal shields for those backs of those lights, so that, um, you can't see the bulbs.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, so, John, this is Damon.
Yes.
What is, what is left? The, the, the drainage, you, you have to do a little bit more work in the drainage, so the, the site is not complete yet, correct?
Correct, the only thing that we really have left to do now is, um, is increase the size of that basin and that four-bay, um, and supply, uh, uh, Graves with a, uh, a drainage report that, that shows that we're, um, meeting, uh, best management practices in Massachusetts for our drainage.
Okay, so, uh, Jeff from Graves Engineering, who is the town's engineer...
Yes.
You have been working with him together on...
Well, I, I just got, I just got the, um, letter today at 3:10. There was 14 comments, I took care of all, but, but, um, I believe that the, the stormwater report and, uh, two other comments, uh, the ones I couldn't take care of was, uh, he wanted the, the limit of the lighting extended past the property line, I'll have our lighting company do that for the lighting plan, and, um, the other one was the drainage report, I couldn't take care of that, but everything else I already have taken care of, uh, I just have to get that back to him. Like I said, I, I only got that letter at 3, 3:10 today. Like I said, I only got that letter at three, three-ten today.
Okay, so basically, everything that the town engineer has brought to you, you can, any questions or any problems that he found on this plan, you can correct every one of them, right?
Yeah, that's correct. We should have no problem. We have plenty of room. Like I said, making the basin bigger is gonna decrease the number of parking spots from seventy down to sixty-six. So that will change on the plan. It'll go from seventy to sixty-six. I already have done the change in grading. I caught that prior to the, before Jeff even sent that, and I already had Gary and Hellman, we looked at the drainage out there, and they've redesigned that basin and four-bay.
Okay. One other thing that's gonna, now, the problem that one of the residents, town residents had about the entrance on the, onto Harrington, on the, the way that the trailers have been driving on the grass and, and, you know, ripping it up. The applicant would be okay with doing, making sure that that's gonna be resolved at some point on their property?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I mean, Jason owns that, so the, the, you know, the road right away there comes in at a ninety. He, he will do something with that, yes.
Okay. All right, I mean, those are the concerns that I have. I mean, as long as we have a town engineer that overlooks our site plan, because we're not engineers, and neither is anybody, or the majority of the people that are residents of the town. So we have an engineer that looks through everything and makes sure that everybody does the right thing. As long as Jeff is comfortable with everything on this plan, then we have to go, that's who we confide in. So, I mean, I have no problem with this. If there's any other questions, Bill, that you gotta go through with that?
Actually, we got a couple more people. I got a Mike Bud who is out there somewhere.
Yes, can you hear, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
This is Bonnie Bud, actually, B-U-D-D, at eight Harrington Street.
Yes.
I live directly across from this property. Um, I'd just like to say first of all that I don't have a lawyer sitting beside me guiding and coaching me. And so I might, I might miscue here. But I, we have a lot of questions around how things get done in this town. I understand that it is not placed for that. I understand that you want to talk about the four corners of the site. But the fact is, we've made the concerns known to the select board since, since very early in the year. And we were told it was not within their purview to address it. And then we had correspondence with the zoning board, who told us that special permission had been granted. We have not been able to find any public record that permission having been granted. We're aware that a special permit was filed with the planning board on July tenth. I don't know, I have, I see you shaking your head, but that's posted on the website tonight's meeting. Special permit, July tenth. Not aware of that ever having been approved, or by reviewed, or by whom that would have been reviewed and approved.
I think that was, I think that was originally put up in air. And I made Gail aware of that. I think the article in the paper supersedes what went up on the site, and it was advertised as a site plan review, as requested by zoning. So, I'm not sure what you're, what you're indicating. It was, I have never heard a special permit on this site, so, other than, other than...
Yeah, my, that's my understanding, is that nobody had. And so I understand that the town gave approval for this, to be used as storage, to be used as... I'm sorry?
They felt it shouldn't allowable use.
Yes. Somebody felt it isn't allowable use. There have been several callers, residents of the town, indicating that is a questionable determination. However, all we can do now as abudders and as residents of Menden and of Harrington Street is make our concerns known. We have an assessment that a seventy-five thousand dollar detriment has been caused to our property value based on the activity. We've made that known to the property owner. We have voiced our concerns about the traffic. The issue is not having traffic on the street. The issue is having freight trucks be the traffic on this street that was not built for freight truck traffic. Our understanding of the original plan for the storage buildings was that it would be traffic by vans, pickup trucks.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
The site, the site plan for the storage units doesn't seem to indicate that there would be space for freight trucks to be coming in and out of there, so that was never the understanding. We also thought that that would be operating within normal business hours, Monday through Friday, nine to five, not twenty-four-seven. Our concern would be, if the town is going to allow, and has already allowed, the lot to be used as a, quote, wholesale storage area for trailers, we would like to request that a lot of stipulations be put in place about, number one, who is actually ensuring that those trailers are full of goods and are not just empty? Who is ensuring that the tractors are leaving the trailers behind and are not staying there and parking, which is explicitly not allowed? We did participate in the annual town meeting in 2019, in which the town agreed that Harrington Street should not be rezoned from general business to highway business.
It wasn't rezoned. It, it, uh, yeah, it was, but it's still the general business district.
Correct.
Now, there isn't any distinguishable difference between the two, only because when we, as a board, configured the highway business district, we had intention to add new uses to the highway business district that, that we definitely wouldn't have wanted to seen. We just haven't gotten the opportunity to do it. You gotta understand the effort it takes to write bylaws. We don't always have the chance to do them immediately. We have an opportunity to make additional changes to the highway business district that we haven't done yet.
Yes, sir.
But, I mean, I'm not sure, I'm not sure who ever made Harrington part of the general business district. It was before, believe it or not, I've lived in Menden fifty-five years, and it was, as far as I know, it was before my time.
Yeah, listen, we, we purchased this home in September 2016. We knew it was a general business district. There's a church here, there's a cell phone tower here. And at the time, there was an empty lot across the street, and we were told they would be storage buildings. At no time was it communicated to us, and frankly, I think to the town, that the traffic coming in and off of the street through that lot would be tractor-trailer trucks.
Unfortunately, you can't, you can't indicate the use. Like I said, a barroom could go in across the street if they get a legal license. I mean, that...
Well, you know, we're happy to, we're happy to get on a call with you if, if a bar applies for a permit, but that seems to be a different conversation. If Harrington, if Harrington Street is going to be used for this wholesale storage area with tractor-trailer trucks on a twenty-four-seven, Monday through Sunday, all day and night, what?
I mean, we can, you know, we could probably set some conditions. Because of this conversation, we haven't, never gotten to that point yet, but we were, we were discussing conditions at the beginning.
Yeah, so, Mr. Chairman, I sent you a letter outlining all of my concerns when this agenda was put on the books. I did not receive a reply from you.
I will tell you right now, I do not do ex parte conversations. You wanna bring something before the board, it's a five-member board. To be honest with you, I look past a lot of that stuff. So people can never confuse, accuse me.
No, sir, I'm not, I'm not accusing you, but, but as a resident of the town who's trying to understand town process, a simple reply saying you need to make this known to all five members of the board, I happily would have done so. If this is the first time that I can make our concerns known to a body that may be receptive, then I'm more than happy to do so. We do not want freight trucks coming on and off Harrington Street twenty-four-seven. If we can talk about restrictions to the number of trucks that are here at one time, or what happens once they're in the lot, and how long they have to unhitch their trailer and leave, or we talk about widening the spot so they can make a, they have more room to turn in and out without destroying the church's property or our property, all of those conversations...
We've already talked about one condition, is shutting the gate off on your end in front of your house. So that's gonna, it's great impact to you.
Mm-hmm, and I'm hap, I'm happy to hear that. I'm happy to talk further about that and what some other conditions should be. I think the greater, but I think the greater conversation is that we're making lots of accommodations to allow tractor-trailer trucks on a, on a one-lane, dead-end, tiny street, where it just, I mean, I just, we just need some acknowledgement that that's, that is kind of ludicrous in the first place.
Well, it really isn't, because, I mean, as you have right to do with your property, if you wanted to turn your property into a barroom or a church or any other business in Menden, you sit on that same road, you have the right to do that. The applicant has a right to do with his property, base tax and town amendments. He has a right to utilize his property for what he sees fit. It's not up to the board to make an unreasonable request of the applicant. He's doing now, is, is the impact of a tractor-trailers on that road? I mean, if, if we only allow him to come out that front gate, what's he traveling? Fifty, a hundred feet to the, to the end of the road? I mean, I think we're doing our best here to remove the impact to Harrington Street for the good of, of everything around it, but, you know, we also have consideration to, we've already gotten allowable use there that may be of greater impact. You know, it's, we don't think the board is just here. You know, I, I get the feeling sometimes that, that the people who come on a particular item before this board for their own concern acts like the board's in the bag with the applicant. No, the board has requirements it needs to lead by. I mean, I'm not sure what you think the relationship is, but I can tell you right now, I don't even buy my cost for Mr. Man. My wife drives a BMW, I get a GMC, that I don't, it's, it's from a governed GMC. So I'm not sure what, what the implication is here, but I'm starting to get offended by that. That you think we just take every application and just, you know, rub a stamp to things? No, we wouldn't be spending all this time going through conditions and looking at things we can do for you, but still, you know, give the applicant his day.
Bill?
Yes.
That was, that was a great speech. But Cindy, this lady Cindy, I don't know her last name, has her, has her hand up.
Yep.
And maybe we should probably move on to the next. I hate that. If you think we should, you think we should move to the next one?
So the next what? I'm sorry.
The next, the next person is, has her hand up.
Oh, yeah.
No, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm sorry that I offended you. I didn't ask any questions about your relationship with the applicant. I did not raise that, I did not raise that at all, and I did not make any accusations.
Well, you made kind of the implication that, you know, we were just gonna wash over this thing, and that isn't the case.
No, actually, no, Mr. Chairman, my, my concern has been that that seems to be what has been happening for months regarding this property.
Yeah, well, fortunately...
And, and that's, that's outside of the planning board. I understand that. So within the, within the confines of the four corners of this site plan review, can we start to talk about what the stipulations might be? What kind of conditions the town might want to put around use of the lot?
Well, some of the things we were talking about before was obviously the rear gate being closed.
Mm-hmm.
The shading of the light.
Mm-hmm.
No idling.
Can we put restrictions around time of day and day? So within reasonable business hours on weekdays?
Um, would the applicant be acceptable to...
Not at all.
To your conditions as far as the time?
Mr. Chairman, Joseph Antonellis, on behalf of the applicant, responding to your question. The, I just want to point for the record that Ms. Bud and the applicant have had multiple discussions about this pro, this project over the last couple of months, including significant and serious negotiations about purchasing her home, recognizing that the Bud family is probably not gonna be happy with a use across the street that is properly zoned but not zoned, or not the same incompatible as the use that she has. I think the applicant continues to wish to purchase the property from her. The restrictions that I think that Ms. Bud and anybody there would want are going to be very disruptive to the use of the property. The property, I do not believe is gonna be overburdened in the use, but I do think there are some idiosyncratic aspects of the use. For instance, if you ask me about not having a trailer, a tractor stay there, there are federal regulations that might require a driver who came, who has been driving for a significant period of time, to stop and wait before he can leave again. I don't know how we could police that. It does not happen all the time. And we hope that it wouldn't happen, but again, it could, and I don't want to get in, in a situation where we're imposing on a driver an obligation to leave when he's not supposed to. Again, I, I think the app, the applicant, you know, continues to stand ready to negotiate with, with Ms. Bud. I recognize again that she hasn't been there that long, but I also recognize that, you know, doing, being a land use lawyer, I always remind everyone that, you know, did you check the zoning before you bought the house? And just because land is not being used doesn't mean it won't be used. These are, these are the typical things that I go through as a land use lawyer, and I don't mean to minimize her concerns, but I do mean to tell the board that your applicant has gone, taken every step possible to try and assuage those issues on, from Ms. Bud. So while we certainly understand the conditions on the, on the site plan approval, I, I would, would state, as I stated earlier, that perhaps we could, we could make that easier for the Buds by moving on a different direction.
I'm sorry, so to the question about, to the question about operating within normal business hours, Monday through Friday?
I, I don't understand anymore in today's society what normal business hours are.
Yeah, and those kind of, we'd have to...
And I, I don't mean, I don't mean to make, to be lecturing about this, but...
So we can, we can, we can, within the... Within the site plan review, we can write, can we write more specific language, rather than a vague phrase such as "normal business hour"? Monday through Friday, say seven AM to ten PM?
So that, that will not work for, for our client.
Why is that?
Because, it just won't. But we have made concessions that we would make sure that anyone in after nine o'clock box in those back six spaces as far as possible from your house.
What we are prepared to do tomorrow is to give you the best coffee you're gonna get on your heart. All that what you did was, you told us that you had a...
No, I didn't want to get in front of the people. Excuse me, people, you know what? I don't want to get off. I want to get back to what we're, we're discussing here. And I, it's, is there any form of time limit that would be amendable to the applicant?
So we have no idea, like, as I started the meeting. We don't believe that it's past nine o'clock or ten o'clock, but we don't know that. And it would only cause problems with them idling on the street, sitting there idling on the street. I think the best solution to the problem is to have them locked as far away from...
I mean, if it's six AM to twelve midnight amendable?
Yeah, we can watch if there's a problem.
I, Bill, I, we can't regulate, I don't know how we regulate that. We lock the gates, and then they're gonna sit there and wait.
Well, it's the, you have a, get you right, get you right these restrictions into your league.
All over the country. It's not, it's not like they're coming from down the street, and they're coming...
and they're coming here, they're coming from all over the country and they, no, no driver wants to get there at two o'clock in the morning, but if, if, if he has problems on the road or something and has to pull in at two, I don't wanna say that, oh, there's gonna be no trailers from, you know, ten o'clock to seven o'clock when I can't even, I can't even enforce that. I, I have no way to, to say that. I, I, I just, you know, I'm, I'm being honest.
You have a twenty, you have a twenty-four hour guard on site, can't they do exactly that? And can't you write?
What is the impact?
Into your lease?
Mrs. Budd?
I, I just, so the church across the street is not open overnight. Yes.
Where's all that act noise coming from? Holy cow. Um, what is the greatest act overnight for you? Is it, is it the, are the trucks that loud or is there?
Yeah. Yes, it's a, it's a, it's a tiny street and we don't live far back from the street, and so when trucks come down the street at night, not only do the lights shine in the bedroom windows of the trucks, but the noise, these, these trucks are loud. Um, I would like to have someone drive them by your house at night just to be aware of the noise factor.
Is there, I mean, if, if, if we're coming out that front gate, is there still that gonna be that type of noise factor?
It would certainly be helped. Uh, if they only pulled in and out of the front gate.
Or we can make the condition.
They would not be, they would not then be driving directly past our house, but they would be then in the lot. Um, we actually did have to call the Mendon Police one night because of some extraordinary sound coming from the lot, and they told us later that someone was changing a tire on a truck at two AM, which I, I don't know what kind of equipment goes into changing a tire at two AM, but it was so loud, um, that I, we just, we need to know that things like that can be prevented.
So.
How about if we had no maintenance on site?
No maintenance on site, yes. Tell them. Yes, no maintenance on site is fine. That happened one time and we made sure that hasn't happened since. It was a, a compressor that was the loud noise. And we have already suggested that we, we shut the back gate, lock it, um, don't use it at all or use it from nine, you know, only from seven AM till nine PM or don't even use it at all.
I'd rather not use it at all if you can.
And then, and then limiting the parking to those, uh, southern sp- spaces down by the detention basin. That's as far away as possible as we can get, um, well over, uh, three hundred feet away from the house or two hundred feet away from the house. I think, believe three hundred feet away from the house. Um, and, and don't be, don't, don't forget, we have berm this side, tree this side, fence this side, slatted this side, all to try to help with the residences in the area. It's not like we have not done anything to try to curb the noise, curb the lights, um, we're gonna put shields on the lights. It's not like we haven't done anything. I don't think you could make a site, if, uh, any members of the board are welcome to go up there and take a look. I don't think you can make a site more secure or more, um, I don't know, hidden from view and hidden and, and, and tried to soundproof as best we could. We've taken these considerations, but we've talked about it, we've talked about locking that back gate. Um, so it prevents the traffic. She is the only residential house on Harrington Street. Um, the cell phone tower is further down, the church is there. I understand the church's concerns too, and, uh, we can do something with the rounding here to help with that if we do lock the back gate. Um, you know, so there's, there's, you know, we're not trying to be a bad neighbor, we're trying to do what we can, we're listening to everybody. Um, we, you know, we're just, we're just, uh, in Mendon.
Um, is there any further soundproofing you could do to that rear gate? Um.
Uh, I guess, I guess if we lock up the back gate, we could, we could extend the berm across where the gate is or something. We don't have to leave that second entrance.
Is that okay with the applicant?
I mean, you gotta, you gotta.
You know what, fire, fire is probably gonna have a, uh, issue with that.
Yeah.
You can be able to do that, yeah.
I mean, I, I think that the, I think the applicant has been, I mean, it's, it's not like they're coming in here and just not wanting to work with anybody. They've done a lot to, everybody's questions, I think, have been.
No, I, I went up here, I thought, uh, this.
This young lady up here, Cindy, needs to get addressed. She's been waiting for a long time.
Yeah, I know, we got a bunch of people, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna move on, um, and let these other people, uh, ask their questions. Uh, Cindy, are you there or? Hello?
You're still muted.
Who's still muted?
Cindy.
Where is she? I don't even see her.
Can you hear me now?
I got you now.
Okay, uh, Cindy Van Slet, thirty-two Crestview Drive. Um, I'm happy to hear that you've already discussed putting things around the lights because, um, I can show you pictures of it, it's like a spotlight coming in through the house. Um, the other question I have is because these tractor trailers are going to be full of merchandise, do we have to worry at all about, um, I don't know, thieves, criminals, um?
They have a guard shack, I think, I think is, is someone in that guard shack overnight, uh, John? You know, are you aware? I would assume Amazon would employ someone.
There'll be twenty-four hour surveillance on site, um, there's cameras on the site.
Okay, 'cause, 'cause the reason I question it is because I know you say you've got the, the trees and stuff there, but when the lights glow, looking straight up our driveway, you can see, you know, that would be like the perfect entrance because you can, there's nothing but woods between Crestview Drive and your facility.
Well, hopefully they'll minimize when they put those shields up.
Yes, we're gonna shield the backs of those lights, so that should help a lot, 'cause I, I know what you're looking at, 'cause you're down below, you're looking at the bulb. You're not looking at the ambient light, you're looking directly at the bulb, so that should help a lot.
Um, actually, the, there, it's both because you can see the, the glow on the ground, you know, where the trucks are, they're all, all lit up.
You're, you're never not, you're ne- you're never not gonna be able to see the lights, but, um, if you're below it, you should be looking into the berm and, and into the trees. Uh, but you're always gonna see some light on the lot, uh, even though the light really isn't leaving the lot, you're gonna be able to look and see light.
Yes, that is not a problem on the, on the low part, that is not the problem. The, the high part in the bulb, that's one issue, you've already addressed that. My point is that that you can see access to that lot from Crestview Drive. So maybe when the pine trees grow in, I don't know, but I'm just saying that if I were a criminal, that would be my point of access would be, it's right, you can see right into how.
Yeah, that, I mean, we, we'll do the best, I mean, the site is fit, very secure, I, I, I don't know if a criminal's gonna break into a, someplace, I don't think there's much you can do to stop them, uh. Um, there's over fifteen cameras on site, so. Um, there's, there's fifteen cameras on site, there's plate readers for all the vehicles that come in and out, um. Security wise, it's a pretty tight security system, I don't know, um, you know, Jason can access the camera from his phone, um.
Is that guard there now, twenty-four hours, or is that going to be a future twenty-four hours?
I, I, I don't know that, that's up to Amazon, I'm assuming he would be there more when there's more trailers in there.
Now, is there a possibility too if, um, if the lights at night only came on when, like, motion detector when a vehicle was entering?
Yeah, I believe, I believe we could do something like that or, or, um.
Because.
Maybe, maybe it could be a dimmer setting at night, I don't know, I'll have to talk to the electricians, but yeah, we, we can work something out with that, yeah.
Because the guard would know if a truck was about to enter that.
Absolutely, you know, we could do something.
And, and, and then that would be a lot less disruptive to just not have that constant.
Yeah, or maybe a lower glow, maybe they could just turn down so it's a, a more yellow light, a more, you know, glowing light at night. Uh, we, we'll, we'll definitely work something out with that, I'll talk to the electricians this week.
Cindy, I don't wanna, did you have another question? 'Cause I really gotta move on to the other community members that have been waiting.
I was just curious about this, this guard shack then, does that mean that they have a, um, like a septic system that's also there for?
No, there's not, there's, uh, no, there's not, there's, uh, our, there's no septic system there, if anything, it would be a porta potty.
Okay, 'cause the only, um, other concern that I have is I am um, kind of closest to the corner where your, um, your drainage stuff is, and I am downhill from you and I already have the drainage easement in my property, so I just wanna make sure that, um, that, that.
Now, so, so the preimposed on the site's already been computed for the original site plan and we'll be redoing it now. No more water will be exiting this site at any, any greater rate than what's already existing on the site.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, I think we have Paul Larson next.
Uh, yes, Paul Larson, sixty-three Milford Street. Um, I've been in contact with the ownership, so far they've been very receptive to all the questions I've had regarding the fielding and everything. Um, but also, very similar to what Cindy asked, um, would it be possible, you know, at night between, like you said, when you did the traffic study, there was a general time at which the majority of the vehicles came in? Would it be possible in the time outside of that primarily at night to either, like you said, dim the lights, maybe cut the amount of lights on in half and bring it down? 'Cause that's the only real concern that I have on my side, and you already addressed the other one, was idling. There were quite a few times trucks are idling, but you've already addressed that, so I'm good with that, but if we could just maybe find a way to, you know.
Yeah, we'll, we'll actually either put them on a dimmer timer or, um, or, or, uh, or, or something that they come on when they come in um, at a lower setting. I don't think we, we're gonna need that much light there overnight. I don't believe there'll be that many trailers coming in after, after dark, um, or after, you know, nine o'clock or so, um. Yeah, we'll do the best we can, we'll work them out with the electrician, and I'll have some information on it for the, for the, you know, next meeting.
Hey, sounds good, thank you.
Uh, let's see, do we have anybody else, uh, has a question?
Yeah, this is Tom Marley from fifty-two Melville Road.
Yes, Tom.
Um, just a question about the site plan review.
Um, yeah.
Would you, um, in determining whether you approve this site plan review, take into account that the, the site plan as it exists turns the site into a use that has specifically, um, gotten a cease and desist for that use? Like, the, the, the plan as it exists essentially encourages the use that, that got it a cease and desist letter, would you take that into account?
Um, it's not the role of site plan, it's a role, that's the role of special permit, I'm not sure what you're asking, Tom. I mean, I can't, I can't make a judgment, it, it wasn't advertised as such and, and it's not the correct procedure. Um, it, you know, as far as I was aware, and, you know, I've been away for a couple weeks, so I'm not sure what's been going on, but, um, it, uh, as far as I was aware, everything was hunky-dory with the new classification under the, the use table. So you kinda catching me in a blind spot here, what you're asking me to do, Tom?
Does the, does the applicant have any?
Yeah, I'm gonna.
But this is, uh, Joe Antonellis again, uh, again, I think the issue of, uh, the cease and desist order was discussed. Uh, the applicant wrote a letter back to the building department explaining that there was not the use that the building department had come to the conclusion that it was. And we moved on, to the best of our knowledge, the building department informed the planning board that had vetted the issue out relative to the definition that I read earlier in the evening and agreed with that definition that it's warehousing and that's what you have before.
And, and I, I, I heard that also, as a planning board member, there was conversation about that, so.
And Tom, I, I mean, uh, you know, if, if I step out of zoning and deny something that zoning's approved, um, would, it would definitely bring legal action. I mean, like I said, Mr. Antonellis threatened me once on another project, I, I actually thought it was in my purview to shut down, and he quickly basically told me that I didn't have the authority to shut it down. He might not recall, but I do.
I, I don't, I don't recall this, but I must have been right.
Yeah, I looked it up and you were.
I, I don't, I don't make threats, um. I can just say this, uh, to, to, to my knowledge, i- if, if the building official had determined other than what I think he informed you, we wouldn't be here tonight. So for, for the standpoint of, of how we got here, we got here because the building inspector, who is the person who is the arbiter of your zoning bylaw, determined that the use of the property as described to him, and as we presented it to you tonight, fit within the category again that I discussed earlier in the evening when I referenced the table of uses. So that, to, you know, to the general public, site, you can only have site plan approval for a use that's allowed under the zoning bylaw. Without that, you can't go forward. So we came forward based on the determination of the building inspector that what we proposed, again, he had full and complete knowledge of what we were doing, um, was allowed, and that's why we're here.
Tom, does that answer your question?
It does.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is Don Moran, thirty-six Crestview Drive, just clarification, so what's the, what's the process for the building inspector to provide that? Did he sign, does he sign off on the site plan application? 'Cause originally he had a cease and desist, there was a communication that took exception to that, how do, how did he close that, is my question?
Yeah, he, he refers it to planning for a site plan review.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, uh, Bill?
I just want everyone clear, if, if, if someone came before planning and didn't have it, no matter whether it be border health or anything else, didn't have all that stuff in place, didn't go to, you have conservation approval or whatever, um, the site, the planning board can, uh, still approve, and if he doesn't have all, every, you know, all the stuff he needs to within the community approved, I, I mean, that's not the planning's responsibility. Planning responsibility is to review the application in front of him. And that's what we're doing this evening.
Bill?
Yes.
This is Damon.
Yes, Damon.
Okay, so we have addressed everything on this site plan, our, our, again, our engineer has addressed everything on this site plan, correct?
Yeah, my, it, um, I, I've written some conditions down we talked about.
Okay.
Uh, the rear gate being closed, the light shading, the no idling, no maintenance. Uh, you still have to respond with the stormwater management. Um, and what was the other thing Jeff asked you for? One of the dimming?
The, the stormwater management and the.
Oh, and the updated lighting plan, past the propy lines.
And, uh, the dimming of the lights. Correct?
Yep, dimming of the lights. Um, no, I think that was everything that we've discussed tonight. Oh, the round, increasing the rounding on the entrance.
Yes, make that so it's a little bit more accessible, um, so we don't damage the road any further than, you know.
To, uh, coming out, so it doesn't interfere with church.
Yeah.
Yep, and if I can just add, um, in terms of the timing from services on Sunday, um, for the noise, 'cause for the same reasons our neighbor um, has stated that there is some noise, we do wanna make sure that we have the ability to, uh, have a worship service that's, uh, lower in noise. I don't know how we're gonna achieve that, but that would be the request as well.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, that's gonna be difficult for us to, um, to require and apply. Um, you know, they certainly have a right to do business there as you do in your church. Um, you know, it, um, I think it's going to be a matter that you might, as a business yourself, you might have to, you know, try and work with the applicant and figure out what they can do to minimize those. to minimize those impacts on yours. Basically, be good neighbors.
Trying to.
And I think that, I don't think... You both sound like reasonable people. I don't think you have a difficult time addressing that.
We'll figure out something for that. And if we do purchase the residence across the street, and then there's no objection for the back gate being open. We can work with keeping the front gate closed during those hours.
Yeah, unfortunately, I'm not making an opinion. I'd rather not make my decisions based on what might not happen, but...
Right, right. Exactly. We'll figure something out on that.
Did I answer everybody's questions or did we have somebody else looking to ask a question? I just want to make sure I hear everybody on this. Because I kind of got blindsided that this was a wide open affair tonight. And I mean, this is like... Caught me by surprise, so... Did I get everybody's question?
I think so.
Sounds like I did. All right. Did you guys want to continue this until all the drawings are corrected? I mean, we can make a...
That would be up to the board. If the board feels we need to, we would rather not and just make the condition on the...
Approval condition on all this stuff being done.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think as long as the town engineer looks at everything, you know, I will approve the contingency that's just going to be...
I'm going to have to come back with plans to the board to sign anyway. They'll have to have all the changes that the town engineer requests and we'll have a clean bill of health and letter from the town engineer.
And to be honest, I'd rather close the public hearing. I think we've... I think it warrants it. We're going to make, I think Jimmy is going to make a motion with requiring, outlining the conditions and requiring the two changes that need to be completed. Private drawings be... I'll show you the things that need to be completed. The updated lighting. And these are based on, and the stormwater management. These are based on Jeff's. And everything else, the conditions. Let me just make sure I got them all. Okay.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the amended site plan for 5 Harrington Street with the conditions of stormwater management, which has not been completed, updated lighting that has not been completed, and conditions, hours of operation.
No. No, that's crossed out.
I'm sorry. Strike that. Rear gate closed, light shades, no idling, no maintenance, light dimming, updated light plan, rounding of entrance.
Rounding of entrance, just on the right side on his property.
Yeah.
Correct, around the entrance of the property.
And the fact that... You said you were going to round the exit on that first entrance to try and stay away from the church?
Yes, absolutely, Bill.
Okay, and rounding of that entrance also. Road modifications is necessary, we'll call it.
Is there anything on there about the hours?
No. No. I would request that we might have to revisit it. John and Mr. Antonakis, is if we do see that, you know, overnight travel becomes an issue, we're probably going to call you back to the board.
Understood. And Bill, I did already shade in the area on that back 5th corner for any trucks that come in after hours.
Yeah, I need a second on that.
Yeah, there's a second, yep.
Two seconds.
Damon.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And thank the board. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we need to, I need a motion to adjourn.
Or make a motion to close the public hearing.
No, 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 hold on.
Oh, yes, we have...
Jay Engineering for Misco Springs there.
We're closing the public hearing, Gail. We're not closing the...
Yeah, closing the public hearing.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, who made the motion to close the public hearing?
Damon is making a motion to close the public hearing for 5 Harrington Street.
Damon's seconding it.
Thank you.
And Jim's second.
Aye.
Aye. All right. We've got one more agenda item, I think, or two more.
Two. There's just one thing from Bill Kessler on...
Yeah, I saw that.
Applewood Development.
Yeah, I saw that. He's all set with the fire system. Yeah, he approved the fire system at the Applewood subdivision.
And it tested, it tested okay. Okay, so the other, only other thing is Misco Springs there, Bill. The drainage pipe and easement relocation.
Yeah, we have a drainage pipe and easement relocation request from the applicant for what was Silver Springs now is Misco Springs. And it's basically, it's a very minimal change. Let me see if I have that. I know I have that modification here. Hold on one second.
Okay, I've got it right here if you wanted. It's a one liner.
He has no drawing? No, he has a drawing. Oh, Jeff does.
Yes, he does. Yep.
All right, I'm going to go by the review letter of Jeff. Because I don't see that I have the drawing itself. But let's go with Jeff's letter and I'll bring that up. All right, what did I do with that one?
They're just moving the drainage pipe and easement to the south.
Yeah, hold on one second.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to show everybody. It's a minor change. The modification really isn't... 5 Harrington, there it is.
10 Locust Hill Drive.
I got it. Now, let me see if I can bring it up on the meeting. Is that it? Is, you know, you didn't upload it there, I don't think. No. Okay. Come on. Now, let me... See if we can share that thing now. All right, here's Graves' letter from Graves Engineering. For those of you unaware, Graves is our engineering consultant out of Worcester, Mass. Jeff Walsh prepared this. He has an amendment to the drainage by Gary Hanlon to the original site plan application dated July 9th. Nope, that's the wrong one. Hold on, let me get the right one. Maybe I don't have it. Maybe Fred never sent me that. Do you have Jeff's letter, Gail?
Yes, I do.
Can you email that to me?
Oh, my computer's down.
Oh, hold on. Let me see if I got it here. Oh, Misco Springs, I got it.
Yep, okay.
Oh, yeah, okay. I just got to see if it shows a change. I got to bring up the right drawing. I got a few different drawings here.
He sent three pages.
Yeah, okay, here it is right here. He's moving... Yeah, he's moving this... Can anybody see that or I got to bring it up again? I got to share it, I guess. He's moving this drainage. He's moving this drainage here 20 feet to give him the ability to add an additional house lot. Jeff's... And I can bring up Jeff's letter here. I have that clearly right. It says, basically, it's in an email. So it says, "I've reviewed the proposed drainage pipe and easement relocation shown on the attached plans. I have no issue with the changes. They're moving the drainage pipe and easement to the south approximately 20 feet, making minor adjustments to the elevations at one man hold to accommodate the change." So really, what our town consulting is telling us is the change has no impact on what we've already approved for the subdivision. Is there any other questions from any of the other board members?
It looks okay to me. As long as Jeff reviewed everything and everything looks good on his end, I'll be happy.
That's why we pay him.
Exactly, exactly.
Now, open any questions to the community? Anybody have any questions?
Phil, it's Mark Reel.
Yes, Mark.
Real quick, just something that I want you to be aware of because I don't want it to come back at you. But any vote taken by the board are supposed to be roll called. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Not for site plan review, I don't think. Is it?
It's, from what I understand, any time you're in a remote participation... But I, that's...
Well, I appreciate that information. I wasn't aware of that, Mark, so I apologize.
Okay. Good night.
All right, thank you, Mark.
So do we need to go back?
Yeah, we need to go back and do a roll call on that.
Oh, you want to finish this first and then go back?
Yeah, we'll finish this first. Any questions? I'm sorry.
No, I think I'm good. Like I said, as long as Jeff is happy with everything, I'm good with it.
Okay, anybody from the community? It's pretty cut and dry. It's a minor change. You know, it really doesn't even require a public hearing. The modification is so slight. So it has no impact to the development itself. So we're... All I need is a vote to allow for the modification of the drainage?
Make a motion to allow the modification on the drainage? On, what do we call on this here?
Let it go. I had it up.
And I have it up here now. Was it Lot 58?
Yeah, Lot 58.
Lot 59. Lot 59, 10 Locust Hill Drive.
Okay, 10 Locust Hill Drive, 10 Locust Hill Drive.
Quirk second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So...
Okay, now you have to do a roll call.
Damon, aye.
Okay, hold on. Okay.
Quirk aye.
Okay, Damon, yep.
Amberzino aye.
Okay.
And Jimmy also did it. He just probably didn't hear.
Okay.
All right.
One more. That's only three.
No, he left at the end of the other...
Oh, John?
Yeah.
John left?
Yeah, John left.
Okay.
We want to go back to...
Okay, so we just have to go back to...
Harrington?
Yeah, 5 Harrington and take a roll call.
Okay, wait a minute now. Let me...
Read the motion back, please. Did you have it?
Okay, hold on a second. 5 Harrington, we did the roll call. Wait a minute. Holy smoke, wait a minute.
No, we did...
No, 21 Cape Road, we did the roll call. Okay. So now, 5 Harrington.
Just, we're going to do a...
Jim made motion to approve the amended site plan with conditions and two changes, blah, 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 blah. So all we need to have to do is the roll call.
All right.
Quirk motion.
Damon motion, Damon seconded.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye. Quirk aye.
You already did that. All you have to do is the roll call, boy.
You have to take a roll call, Gail.
Yes.
Don't worry.
We're just doing it all legally.
Damon, did you say?
Yes, on Damon.
Okay. Bill, yes.
Yes, Amberzino aye. And let's go back to...
And John was there too, so on that one.
No, John wasn't there. He had left.
Oh, he didn't? Oh, okay. As long as you got the...
Wait a minute, we... Did...
All right.
Did we vote on 21 and 25 Harrington? Yeah, right?
Yeah, that's the one we did the roll call.
We did the roll call on that one?
Yep, yep.
Okay. You're right, we did. We did do the roll call on that one. Absolutely.
On the first one, yes.
Yes.
Surprised Joe Antonakis didn't catch us on the second one.
Yeah, I'm surprised too. He looked like he was ready to get out of the room.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's right. We did the roll call on that one. Okay.
But...
So we're all set now.
Yeah.
And Damon approved the modification.
Jimmy made the motion. I seconded it.
Okay, I'm sorry. Say that again?
On 5 Harrington Street, Jim Quirk made the motion and Damon seconded it.
I have that. I'm talking about the... I'm talking about Misco now.
Misco, we just did. We already rolled call.
We're all done. Okay, we're all done.
All right, so we just need a motion to adjourn.
Quirk motion to adjourn.
Damon seconded. You want a roll call?
Okay, Quirk.
All those in favor?
Aye, Quirk.
Okay, so don't hang up yet. Bill?
Hi, this is Rachel Valencia.
Oh, who's this?
Kathy, you got to unmute.
Yes, Rachel.
Oh, Rachel.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, Rachel.
I believe that tonight was going to be the night that we discussed my trying to open a special permit for an at-home hair salon.
Yeah, I think we set a public hearing, we set a public hearing date on it.
Yeah, September 14th, yeah. You're all set, all we have to do...
Yeah, 'cause we, um, on, what we need to do is advertise in the paper, Rachel, and we have to do it like fourteen days and twenty-one days out, or, and so that...
I thought you guys just might have questions for me, I'm sorry.
No, we usually wait till the, the hearing itself.
Yeah, I think, I thought I explained that to you, Rachel, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's fine, it was very educational.
It was just a presentation tonight, so they could, yeah, so they could do a public hearing, um, to vote, to have it done. Give me a call tomorrow if you have any questions, Rachel.
Okay, thank you so much, Gail.
Thank you, Rachel.
All right, yep.
Did anybody else have any questions?
I have one question, yeah, hold on. Who was, there was someone named Sherri, do you know her last name?
I don't.
Okay, I don't either, so I'm just gonna put Sherri. I have no idea who she is.
That's fine, that's fine, it's...
But so many people were talking at once. And then, how about a Kristen?
Gail, Dan.
What's that?
It's Dan, Sherri's name is in the chat.
Okay, so Sherri...
More than one person's answering me.
You asked about, you asked about Kristen. It was Kristen O'Clare.
No, it was, uh...
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you. Fifty-two mill though, right?
Gail, Gail, it was a Sherri. Dan's right, and should be in the chat, Dan, do you, do you see what her last name is?
Yeah, I was gonna type it, it's Feast, F-E-E-S-T.
All right, that's why I couldn't understand it when she was saying it. Um...
Okay, F-E-E-S-T?
Yeah, and Sherri was two...
Her name was right on my banner, it's in the middle of my screen, so...
Well, I don't have a screen, so, okay. That's all I needed was, uh, yeah.
All right, so we need a motion to adjourn?
Quirk motion to adjourn?
Tini, oh, second.
All those in favor?
Quirk aye.
Aye.
Amber Zino aye. All right, good night, everybody.
Good night. Oh, you're funny.
What the fuck is... What the fucking, fucking shit? What the fuck?